Secretary, please call the roll.
Excuse me, sorry, I had my mic muted. Ms. Como?
Here.
Dr. Cooper Sol?
Here.
Mr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy? Ms. Leahy?
I see her, but she's muted.
Right. Ms. Leahy, can you unmute your mic?
She might have stepped away for a second.
Okay. We'll pause on Ms. Leahy. Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
I have not heard that Mr. Meyer is not attending, so...
Okay. Mr. Corber?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Here.
Mr. Turner did give me a phone call that he was gonna be excused tonight.
Okay.
And that's it?
Sure. Okay, so do we want to try Ms. Leahy again, or?
She appears black on my video feed. Does that look the same to everyone else?
Correct.
Okay. I'll watch for her.
Okay. All right, so Quorum of the Board of Education is present. So the July 13th, 2020 special meeting is called to order. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the board with a motion from Mr. Corber and second about Ms. Como. We will approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Hearing no motion to amend, we will then have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
She's gonna step out of the meeting and come back in because she couldn't, didn't have any sound.
Yes, I see the chat. Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer? Is, excuse. Mr. Corber?
Aye.
Ms. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner?
I, I thought Mr. -
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry. Dr. Cooper Sol?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't have any public speakers registered for this evening, so we will move to the information portion of the meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Eagle.
Thank you all for being here tonight for a special board meeting. I know it's an extra hurdle, and I appreciate your commitment to this time. In developing this reopening plan where we're at at this point, I just want to thank all the people involved as I've had an opportunity to meet with our administrative staff. I really think like, these are the right people to be here. So I'm really excited to have worked with everyone up to this point. I would say that the work we've done so far has been monumental. It is the most significant work I have done in my time as an educator. I mean, it is really pretty amazing, the scope and the expectation as we, as we move forward. You know, we're, we're in the process of reimagining schools in ways that will change them forever, and I think in many ways for the better, but it is still monumental work. One of the big things that, you know, we struggle with as we go through this is balancing the safety of students with the educational needs of our students, and that gets really difficult sometimes. And so know that at every step of the way, we're struggling with what is the right balance to, to make the best possible environment for our students. I would also like to say that we've really been thinking about nothing else for four months, honestly. Since March 18th, when schools were shut down. You know, everything we've been thinking about has not only been, how do we close schools? And educate students in a remote emergency setting, but also how do we reopen them? And every step along the way, we've been a little hopeful that the powers that be will step in and provide us guidance so that we can take the next step in the right direction with all the help that we need. We waited on the governor's office, we waited on the legislature, we've waited on DPI, we've waited on the county. And it was only on Thursday that we finally got some of the definitive guidance that we needed from the county to be able to move forward. And so while it seems like we've waited a long time, and while it's been frustrating for a lot of folks, know that it's only been four days since we've had the guidance we've needed to really move forward. And so for us to be able to put something like this together, it shows that we've been working on this, you know, for, for a very long time in, in anticipation of this. So something to keep in mind. This document and where we're at right now is the result of an incredible amount of collaboration internally within our own school district, but also with the county health department. We've been fortunate to have regular meetings with them weekly. And we've also had work groups that have gotten together with local school districts to help develop plans as well. We've been collaborating closely with other La Crosse school districts, La Crosse County school districts, Holman-on-Alaska, West Salem, and Bangor. We want to make sure that we're all on the same page and following the county's guidance. We don't want to create a haves and have-not situations between our school districts. We don't want to exacerbate competition. We each want to provide the best education for the students that reside in our, in our boundaries. And so that collaboration has been huge. I do know there is some, you know, concern by teachers and staff members that we haven't involved them enough at this point. And I want to let you know, we've only been able to provide this guidance as of Thursday. And so at this point, the work really shifts onto our principals and our teachers to, to develop those detailed plans. So I'm excited to really see heavy involvement from those folks at this point. That being said, we have had teacher involvement, we have had principal involvement along the way as well. I also want to emphasize that this is a draft. This is our first step in a very long process. And we wanted to get that draft out to the school board first. Your voice is the most important in how we open our schools and that you ultimately are responsible for the education of the students in a school district. And so we want your input before we take these next steps in working heavily with staff, parents, and our community. There's gonna be continual updates in communication. It's my intent from this point forward to put out an update after every SAS meeting that we have, so every Monday and Wednesday, and then also the weekly update on Fridays. Hopefully, many of those emails are simply, nothing has really changed. But I also want to make sure that if there's deadlines and dates out there that you're hearing about in the community, that you have access to those on a regular basis. At the same time, there's going to be continual operational changes, and decisions might go back and forth before we land on the appropriate solution. And so as people inquire in the community, I would encourage you to direct them to the website or call us so that we can be that point of contact for them to get their questions answered. One thing that I have thought about throughout this whole process, and I know our administrative team has as well, is there's real students behind these decisions. And I have a list of students in my head that, that have specific concerns over the years that I think about, you know, actively. You know, a student, my own child, you know, who misses her friends, you know, who's typically developed, has a lot of advantages, but really wants that community back. We have medically fragile, wheelchair-bound students who cannot communicate verbally. We need to provide an education for them as well, and this plan needs to be suitable for their needs. We have students who have learning disabilities, who need reading interventions. And regardless of the mode of education they receive, they deserve those legally obligated services. We have gifted students who love robotics club and can't wait to be a part of the book club, and we want to make sure that we're thinking about their needs. We have students who were totally disengaged by online learning and do not want to return to that mode ever again, and we want to ensure that they get the education they deserve too. And we have students who are gifted and they're, you know, seeking AP opportunities, and maybe the Ivy League is in their future. And, you know, the mode of education that we provide shouldn't limit their future possibilities. And we have students that are looking at youth apprenticeships and maybe want to get into a plumbing apprenticeship and go to tech school for a little while, who want to enter the workforce, and the opportunities we're able to provide for those students will affect their life trajectories. So for me, I think about some of these students, and I know our administrators do too, as we make these decisions. And so each step along the way, it's filled with just weighty things. Kind of like I said earlier, this is perhaps the most consequential thing I have dealt with in my entire educational career, is planning for the closure of our schools and now the reopening. And as such, like, I approach it with humility. I know that we don't have all the answers at this point. And at the same time, I know that together we can do it better. And I also ask for a little bit of grace, both from the school board and from our community as we move forward. It's a work in progress, it's a draft, and we're putting forth our best effort at every step of the way. So it's a little bit of a preamble for it, and we've got lots more to add as we go through. I'm going to attempt to share my screen so that you can see the, the presentation as we move forward. I'm gonna present a few things, but I am certainly not the sole author. We have an incredible staff, like I said here, administrators who are gonna present different slides. After each slide, we'll pause and, and take questions and solicit your input. The things that you are concerned about or feel need to be adjusted, we will take those notes and make those adjustments before we publish anything out to the, to the staff and the community. So here goes. All right, Laura, did it work? Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. So here's our draft reopening school buildings, 2020, 2021. One of the first things we wanted to highlight is that we're operating within this framework. And we've pulled out key things that we want to highlight as we move forward that have come to the fore a little bit more as we move through this particular, particular plan. So the first thing are our commitments. Safety is top of mind. In a global pandemic, health concerns are, are, are first priority. And so our plans reflect guidance from the CDC, from the state, and from the La Crosse County Health Department. And as we move through this, know that we have collaborated very closely with the county for approval on the, the health measures that we've taken. Instruction. Our plans reflect a preference for traditional classroom learning, and I say that it's traditional only in that it's face-to-face in person. Obviously, we are always continually improving our classroom teaching and learning, but we know from this shutdown that a lot of students have learned best face-to-face with a teacher. At the same time, we're also looking at the conditions necessary to safely reopen schools, and we're also providing models that are blended and for e-learning when traditional classroom learning cannot occur. Plans will need to be fluid. Flexibility is of utmost importance. As conditions change in our community, we need to be responsive to that. If we need to shut down a school building or the school district for a period of time, we need to be able to respond to that so that we can account for the safety of our students and our community. And then equity. We know that this school closure has negatively impacted some students more than others, and how we reopen schools will negatively or positively affect some students more than others. And so as we return, we want to ensure that equitable services are provided so that those that need the most assistance get it, and so we can support and accelerate their learning. Some assumptions about our return. We're fairly certain our budget will be constrained. Other than the CARES Act funding, funding, which will likely not be sufficient for all the modifications to the traditional school year, we don't anticipate additional state and federal money at this point. And given the budget deficit in the state, we may have less to work with than we did in previous years. So that impacts our ability to hire extra teachers, provide more transportation options. That's a, a major limitation. Parents' supervision. An assumption is that they'll be working and potentially less frequently from home. And if they are working from home, they may have limited ability to assist their child in their education. And we've seen fewer childcare options throughout this last four months, and don't anticipate additional childcare options as we move forward. And then flexibility. Conditions will be ever-changing, and our response will need to be ever-changing. We need to be able to adapt flexibly every day to safely provide the best education for all of our students. I'll pause for a moment and ask if there's any questions at this point.
This is Juan. So I have a question regarding the online instruction. I understand that not everybody learns in that modality, but have we had any considerations as to practice makes perfect? In other words, maybe into older grades in the high school potentially where continuing the online environment might not necessarily be a bad thing. Any, any thoughts about that?
Absolutely. One, one thing that we're providing is a fully online experience for students and families that have concerns about returning at all. And Ms., Dr. LaCocke will talk a little bit further on that later on. And then we're also developing a blended option for students that may have to be at home for periods of time. So whether it's a temporary quarantine or some other concern, so that they're able to receive instruction for temporary absences as well. And there'll be a little bit more information on that also.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I, I'm not covering the good stuff at this point. This is just background, so much, many more details to follow. There aren't any more questions at this point. I will turn it over to Dr. Harcy.
Thank you Superintendent Engel. And I too would just thank the board for convening for this special meeting tonight. Obviously, it has a lot of gravity and a lot of importance for our school district and for our community, so thank you. This slide really presents our goals tonight and our efforts, what we're gonna try to accomplish here. And so as Superintendent Engel mentioned, we're going to have a team of presenters. So slide by slide, you'll be hearing from a variety of us going forward here. We'll be talking about operations, and when we're talking about operations, we're gonna be talking about everything from physical spaces, everything from signage and, and furniture and Plexiglas and all those kinds of things you've probably been hearing bits and pieces about. We'll be talking about healthy environments, so ventilations, disinfecting efforts, all those good things. Day-to-day operations, so visitors to the buildings, field trips, those types of pieces you'll be hearing about tonight. Transportation, you've been hearing probably bits and pieces about transportation, capacity of our buses, seating, student seating, those kinds of pieces. Board member Jimenez talked a little bit about instructional models. We'll be talking about instruction tonight a bit. And really, three different opportunities, as Superintendent Engel mentioned, traditional, we're, you know, air quotes around that. We're really talking about face-to-face instruction. And then a blended model, which is allowing us some flexibility. Should we have rolling stops of, depending on what's happening in our community around COVID? Should students have to be quarantined? One student, two students, a classroom of students, you know, those kinds of things. And then the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. Dr. LaCocke, as Superintendent Engel mentioned, will be talking more about that. 100% fully online experience that's been developed in collaboration with area school districts here over the last several weeks. Truly kind of a remarkable effort. Finally, and Superintendent Engel has already mentioned a bit about this, some of the collaborative efforts that have been taking place throughout the area. I, I would just, we'll, we'll talk more about the efforts with, and you'll hear it peppered through all of the slides, I'm sure, but our plan has been, I just want to emphasize, our plan's been informed by and by the county health department, as you've heard, American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, DPI, et cetera. So just know that the plan that you'll see before you tonight is on par and endorsed by all of those organizations. I just want to make sure that our board is confident in knowing that all of those organizations are in support of what we're bringing forward for you tonight. The action that we're really seeking tonight is your input. We want to make sure that you feel confident. Tonight's a really important night in that if we're going in a direction that the board is not comfortable with, tonight is a, is a great night for that input because we do have principals, educators, support staff chomping at the bit to, to walk hand in hand and support planning efforts going forward in our school district. So we want to make sure that we are honoring something that you can feel really confident in for our community going forward. This is a working plan. Superintendent Engel pointed out that, that bit of information that we got from the county health department that was so critical for us was that we can have in-person- health department that was so critical for us was that we can have in-person learning in the compass category red so long as the plan is approved by the county health department. That was really important for us. Up until that point, we were swirling, we're kind of hovering around this, had to be virtual learning. Well, now that we got the approval to move forward with in-person learning, it's a game-changer for us, and we can honor things like the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation that it's really healthy for our young students to be in school. So that allowed us to do some different planning. And so that's the broad overview, the umbrella you're going to hear tonight. I do want to pause at this point, too. I know Ami is up next, but I just want to make sure that I take a breath here and see if there's any questions given what you're going to hear tonight. Okay, here none, I'll turn it over to Ami Zabrowski.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for taking the time this evening. I guess within any plan, and as Dr. Engel said, the health and safety of our staff and students is our number-one priority at all times, and particularly as we talk about reopening our buildings and our schools to face-to-face learning. To that end, we felt like it was incredibly important to communicate the importance for staff and families to know when they should not come to school. And really, that goes to any students and staff that have symptoms of COVID, which are listed on the right of the presentation and that we hear all the time, has been tested for COVID or has been exposed to somebody who tests positive for COVID, needs to stay home. And that by keeping ill students and staff out of our school buildings and keeping those that have a high chance of being exposed to COVID-19 out of the schools for the designated time set by our county officials, that's how we limit the spread of the disease, and that's how we maintain progress and face-to-face instruction. I'm going to remind her for everybody as well that it is possible that people that do not have symptoms can spread the virus, and that's why that, keeping staff and students home when they've been exposed to the virus and somebody that tests positive is incredibly important during this time. We recognize that this is a big ask of students and families. For a student to stay home when they have a cough, I have young children, I know how often they get coughs, and that can be a big burden on families and on staff members that have children at home. But in the interest of health and safety, we feel that this is critical, and that's why we also have the continuum of services and the blended learning model that will be talked about later to ensure that when this happens, that instruction is not interrupted for those students that can't come to school due to symptoms or possible exposure. So with that and moving on with the health and safety, I'm going to have Patty Spring take over and talk about some of the operations and physical spaces in our buildings and how they'll look different.
Good evening, board members. So last week, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Joe Levine, had shared with you some of his capital improvement plans, which include some of the COVID preparations. And we have been looking at physical barriers, floor adhesives, and some of that work has already started and has been placed in our buildings, so it's a continuous process. But we hope we will be ready by September 1st. So little things like the drinking water, we're going to have only bottle-filling opportunities, and we have some water fountains that will be having an addition to them so that they are capable of the bottle-filling capacity. We also will have, the elementary classes have sometimes a sink and faucet, but they also have a water fountain attached. Those will be closed off so the students cannot use those. However, it is a great opportunity in the elementary that they do have these sinks in the classrooms so they can have hand-washing sites. In the high school, where there are no sinks in the classrooms, they will have the hand sanitizer. So we also are looking at the creative space for distancing in each of our classrooms and our buildings. You'll be happy to know that Joe and his team were able to get through every one of the schools last week with the principals and the nurses to figure out the isolation rooms, and they have been identified in every building. So we have our buildings right now are still closed to the public, and the Y and the Boys and Girls Club that are using our buildings have to have a COVID plan in place that's been approved by the county, and we would expect that that would be true for anybody using our facilities while we are in the categories of red or orange. Any questions on that slide? No? Okay, we'll go to the next one. So healthy environment, so we're talking about ventilation. All of our systems district-wide are being upgraded so that with the touch of one button, there can be full ventilation. We already have it in place where one button would cut off all ventilation, but the increased ventilation is very important in this situation. So the cleaning and disinfecting, our staff has been doing this religiously and will continue to do so. So shared objects, there'll be limitations on that. Communal spaces will be looked at, and we will increase our cleaning protocols there. The hand sanitizer and hand hygiene, those are going to be in public spaces, and like I said before, in classrooms that don't have a sink and water for washing hands. We are looking at modifying the building layouts, meaning maybe we're going to have a one-direction hallway, or certain grades would only be able to enter through certain doors or exit through those doors. Any questions on that?
Patty, I apologize. This is Juan. I may have missed it, but are we also talking about face masks as well?
Yes, I think Ami is on to the next slide, and she will share that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we can expect as we come back to school that our day-to-day operations are going to look a lot different than what we, than as we left them. So some of those things, and we'll get to the face coverings topic here in a minute. But visitors, we really are going to be looking at limiting nonessential visitors and visits into our building. We want to make sure that we can account for healthy people in our building at all times. Within our classrooms, it's really important that our students, as much as possible, are in cohorts. So a group of students will be educated as a group of students, and there won't be commingling or limited commingling with other groups of students. Part of the reason for this is to limit the potential of exposure, but then also if there is a positive case, that allows for quick and easy contact tracing, too. And then it cuts down on the number of potential exposures that might need to be quarantined if we do have a positive case. Our entrances and exits will be regulated, so we may just designate certain entrances to the building for specific students so that we can make sure that we can screen students upon arrival. That will be something we're doing, is daily screening of symptoms of staff and students every day so that we can account for if a student has symptoms, we can follow up and make sure that we, any unexplained symptoms, that we can get that student or staff member home. On the topic of face coverings, we will be determining the exact use of masks, face masks, for students and staff based on CDC, DPI, and La Crosse County Health guidance. We can expect, though, that staff and students will wear face masks during certain activities. You will see staff and students wearing masks during certain activities. The extent that they'll wear them and who, the scope of who all will wear them is yet to be determined, but there will be face mask use within the building. Our school nutrition services, we will make sure that all district students have access to school meals every day, even those that are not physically in the building. We're going to be limiting field trips and gatherings, particularly when we're in the red, orange, and yellow categories of the county compass. We're going to need to be using our staff really flexibly to make sure that we're covering daily operations, prioritizing student learning, and then also making sure that if we have staff out, we have plans in place for other staff to take over those critical and essential jobs within a school building. For our students that are considered high-risk, so those that are at high risk of developing complications if they were to get COVID-19, we want to make sure that we have extra precautions in place, limiting exposure to lots of people within the building and making sure that there's alternatives for families if they choose to. To that end, we have some students that would be considered high-risk that will be starting extended school year services this week and have multiple precautions in place to make sure that they're, and have been working with families to make sure that they are healthy and safe during those services. And then we'll make sure that we have frequent and systematic communication with our staff, with our parents and families, and with our community, and you as a board throughout things. So I'll pause there because I anticipate there's maybe a question or two about some of those topics.
You guessed correctly. Question for you in regard, has any thought happened with regard to people who may say, "I don't plan on wearing a mask," or refuse to wear a mask? And then a second question would be, have you considered that potentially there could be a staff member who decides at the last minute, "You know what? I do not feel comfortable coming into the classroom or into the school building, and so therefore I'm resigning."
Yeah, great questions, and I think those are questions that I know sit on my mind often, and I know Mark White, our Human Resources Director, would say he's thinking on that staff question every night, all night long, probably. Related to the face masks and understanding that people have different thoughts about the use of them, we want to make sure that in our decision-making, we're following guidance of the experts, but we also understand that we will need to account for everybody's different opinion. We know that we will be encouraging the use of face masks amongst all staff and students, and then beyond that, we're still making determinations of what that looks like on a day-to-day basis.
I can add to that a little bit. The DPI put out a multi-page guidance on face mask wearing, and they did not indicate that we should require it, you know, across the board. They said it's highly recommended, but they also indicated that there's circumstances where it may not be necessary and that you need to work locally. It's another example of where, you know, we've been given guidance but not directives, so to speak. We're also exploring with our legal counsel what we can and cannot require legally. There are some complications with requiring students to wear masks potentially, which want to make sure that as we approach that issue, we're on solid ground before we make demands, we can't back up. I think it's pretty clear from the science that wearing masks limits the spread, and so that would be the preference throughout. However, we just want to make sure that we're accounting for what we're capable of demanding. And I appreciate that. I can let Mr. White talk about the staffing issues that are very much on our mind.
I just like, oh, sorry, Mark. I just wanted to add, too, we do recognize that there are students and staff that will not be able to wear face masks due to health conditions or other conditions, so we want to make sure that we're cognizant of that as well. Okay.
Juan, I would just say that obviously, you know, getting this plan out now so that staff can consider what school will look like in the fall is important. As you know, we offered an early retirement or an extra retirement window in June. If we had any staff that were concerned at that time, we'll work with anyone, but, you know, in terms of where they're at and, you know, should someone choose to decide that they want to resign, you know, before the school year starts. Obviously, knowing that sooner than later would be of great benefit to the district, so we're fielding emails now. And then we'll work consistently with our district lawyer, who some of you have met in the past and have had discussions with, who's very good at what she does, and we'll make sure that we have a consistent procedure that will follow federal and state laws in terms of if there are medical situations that would prohibit or allow certain types of staff to do and be re-employed or not employed, and options that would be appropriate for our staff. So we're working on it, as Ami suggested, every day and thinking about, you know, what kinds of things we can do, but it's a lot easier to do now and do it earlier in late July, early August than it would be doing it in late July or early September. You're absolutely right.
No, thank you for that, Mark, and that's exactly why I'm asking the question, because it's better to be proactive than reactive, and so getting the information out makes a lot of sense.
And one option that we're providing our students, but will ultimately also providing our staff, is the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. We'll have a need for teachers to teach online, and we're still working through, you know, what that looks like for staffing as we determine enrollment. But that will provide an opportunity for some teachers that don't feel comfortable attending in person, potentially.
I have one question for you. The little kids, they're going to be the biggest challenge, I think, just because of learning to keep their hands to themselves and stuff like that. But the other thing is, is they also do snack time. So normally, parents donate snacks and donate things. Are we going to require that they have to be individually packaged, which just makes the price go up? And then, like, you know, usually they have like a helper of the day or something like that to even just distribute it. I mean, those are the very small, little things, but I think those are the places where that's the comfort for a kid, you know? You get to that point where I'm hungry in the day and I can't concentrate. Snack time is like super important for all of us, right? So have we kind of thought about how parents' involvement and how, because teachers can't pay for all of those snacks, and we rely on our parents a lot for that.
I will speak to that a little bit. Our school nutrition is under a lot of restrictions, and this might be the year where we cannot accept food from outside of the school district. So that is a good point as far as the snacks, so I will have that discussion with our school nutrition staff and see how we might handle that.
Is it something like, as you all know, the Beer by Bike Brigade does amazing stuff, and they've talked about doing school supplies or something like that? Would that be something where I could like rally them to donate to the school district and then the district distributes stuff? Or, I mean, I know that I can even just get Mario to come and talk to you guys and, you know.
I think Mario is in constant conversation with Marilyn Bolden, our supervisor of school nutrition. They do a lot for the district, so I know that there are resources out there that will help. But any rallying you want to do, you go right ahead. It'll all be helpful.
Thank you.
This is Shelley, and we're also, and I'll share about it in just a minute, but at the elementary level, we've got pretty detailed plans, and snacks is on those, on that plan. So, and I'll be talking about that in just a bit.
Yeah, I was thinking about how they always even just pulled all the pencils into buckets and all of the school supplies, and they just kind of shared so that nobody felt like they were better because they had more. So I'm just trying to keep that inclusivity and make it so it's fair across the board and still safe.
This is Shondell. I have a question around the screening process. So I know that we were talking about staffing having to be flexible and things of that nature. I've also watched how, you know, some schools, particularly, I work at Western, and so we set up screening stations and, you know, thought that we were going to be able to staff those stations, and eventually we were not. So my question to you all is, have you thought about how you're going to be staffing those symptom screening stations? And what happens if staff members that are supposed to be showing up to those screening symptoms stations and they don't show up?
I can answer that. Thanks for the question, Shondell. Yeah, so we have, as we planned for symptom screening, had all of those questions and been very concerned about the logistics of in-person screening for every student and staff member. So we are planning to have what we would consider So we are planning to have what we would consider a remote active screening process. It would include either a text, email, or alert on a student device that would bring a family or a student to a questionnaire where they would report their symptoms. And then that would send reports to district staff that, of those students and staff that have no symptoms and are good to be at school, and those students or staff that are displaying symptoms that will need following up by our health staff, our nurses and our health assistants. So there will be a need for some level of staffing to do the screenings for those families, students that don't complete that survey prior to arrival at school, or those that arrive after indicating a positive to a symptom. But we hope that by doing the remote active screening, that that would significantly reduce the amount of staffing and time we would need, and the potential for a backlog of students to congregate as they await entry into the building.
I have a follow-up question to that. So is this, this online mechanism for screening, is this something that families are going to be expected to complete every day?
Yeah, so it's, the recommendation from the county health department is daily active screening, particularly when we're in red and orange. So yes, it would be a daily, multiple questions. We still haven't designed it. It could be a, once a week, you fill out the full list of symptoms, and then the subsequent days, you answer a question of, "Has there been a change in your health status since yesterday or in the last two days?" But yes, it would be daily.
Okay, so what happens if a student comes to school and they haven't filled out that daily screening?
Yep, we'll have to have staff that follow up with them in a discreet and confidential manner as we can to do the screening there at school.
Okay, I'm sure there's some alternatives that have been discussed for families that won't have access to technology to be able to do that?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Ami.
Yep.
Oh, go ahead, it's just me.
Shondell, again, the cohort model, is that just only in the elementary school? Or are y'all getting to the middle and high schools at some point? If so, I'll leave my question out.
Yes, we will be covering the middle and high school as well at a separate slide.
Okay, I'll wait.
Actually, to that point real quick, just for protocol, I'm sure there are some of us that have a number of questions to get to, and I'm so appreciative that after each slide, everyone's asking us if we have questions then. But I assume we're getting to a general question and answer session at the end of this. And quick overview, what, for families who are also watching us as we live stream this, can we just get a quick overview of what we have left to cover? The Virtual Academy is one of those.
Yes, we'll still be covering instructional models, what it looks like if you're at school, what it looks like if you have to be home temporarily. The virtual option, what that could look like, will look like. And then we'll also have communication and a couple of other things to talk about as well. So the meaty stuff is still coming up. I know everything's of importance, but I hope families can bear with us as we get to those things. Everything creates so much question.
That's helpful, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to transportation. I think Mrs. Spring is going to take us from here.
Yeah, so operations and transportation, that is a big question. We are working on it with the guidance of the state and the county, and the schedules that will be developed by the elementary and high school staff. So Mike Freibler, our transportation manager, is working with those, with the secondary and elementary principals and directors. So, you know, there's some capacity issues as far as we need to have, you know, one student per seat when possible. Students from the same household may sit together. We're going to try to maximize social distancing. We would be expecting students to be wearing masks on the buses, an assigned seating chart, and different ways of loading to prevent exposure to each other. So the buses will be disinfected. The IEP for special needs students will drive the accommodations. We have to consider that parents might want to self-transport if they are not comfortable with their student riding the bus in these conditions. And then there might be pickup and drop-off zones. They might need to be modified to increase the self-transported students. So this is, this is continuous, and we have asked parents to register for transportation as if it is a normal school year, and so we can use that information as we go forward to see how many students plan on attending face-to-face or may choose the online options. Are there any questions?
So let's talk a little bit about instructional models. At the beginning, we had mentioned traditional, quote-unquote, our face-to-face instructional model, which we'll talk about here in just a second. We also mentioned our blended opportunity and fully online with the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. Momentarily, Shelley will talk about what all of that will look like at the elementary school level, followed by Stacy talking about our 6312 experience, our secondary schools, and Mike will talk about the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. First, I just will tell you that as we talk about traditional in-person classroom learning, we do plan on September 1st. At this time, given the information we have currently, the data we have currently, the vast majority of our parents are telling us they want that face-to-face experience to return. So that is what we are planning to offer with September 1st around the bend here. From July 13th, where we stand today, to September 1st, we have 50 days. So while the days are long, time is short, and there is no, there is no really business as usual. So as you've heard up to this point, when we return, it will be with enhanced safety and health protocol to reduce risk with COVID-19. We will have asked for flexible staffing and flexible schedules. Again, Stacy and Shelley will talk a bit more about that. Slide 16, coming up in just a little bit. Kurt Taff will tell you a little bit more about our support for social emotional learning for our students. They've been through a lot since, we'll go back to March. What's been happening over the last several months, we know weighs heavily on families and certainly our students. So in welcoming our students and families back to learning, we're being very, very mindful of supporting families, students, and staff. The fact of the matter is, you know, those of you who were available for Joe Ladina's Capitol presentation, this does require additional resources, not only physical changes, but also we've got a lot happening on the instructional side of the house to, you know, to best prepare for all of the changes as we're ready for September 1st. Communication, obviously, is something that we need to make sure. Superintendent Engel had mentioned at the onset, it's going to be regular and ongoing. And then our flexibility needs to be certainly responsive to what's happening in the community in terms of the numbers that we see with COVID. And we certainly will try to be as nimble as possible, making sure that we're keeping students and staff safe with continuous instruction as our expectation internally. So I'll stop there for just a moment, knowing that we've got Shelley coming up to tell us about elementary. Stacy with secondary, and Mike with the Cooley Region Virtual Academy next.
There was a question in the chat, I don't know, Addie, if you have an answer, but do you know what percentage of families have responded to the transportation survey? And if we've made any extra efforts to get parents to respond due to the circumstances?
I do not know the answer right now, but I will find out and get back to you.
I think I just got the phone call yesterday, so I don't think, I mean, it was like yesterday evening when I got the phone call for the transportation thing, so my guess is it's not like huge yet.
All right, move it over to Shelley.
Well, good evening, board members. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you information about how our elementary schools are going to operate in the fall. I'm going to skip around a little bit on this slide while hopefully distinctly addressing the majority of the points here, knowing that some have been talked about and some will continue to be talked about in future slides. At the elementary level, we have been prioritizing finding a model that allows us to be face-to-face on a daily basis with our elementary students. We do understand that we provide an essential service to our families, and our students, not just from an educational perspective, but also our community counts on us, and their children being with us, safe at school while they are at work. So we've worked with the county on classroom configuration options that prioritize safety, but also ensures that the critical relationships between teachers and students and their peers are protected. So we want to keep groups of kids together as much as possible and not have them moving from, and you're familiar, hopefully you're familiar with the county grid system, but we don't want to have that in red. They have this teacher, and then in orange, they're back with their classroom teacher, and it goes back to red, and they're moving between teachers. So to address the safety of our students, we submitted a classroom configuration plan that keeps those cohorts together, minimizes contact with others in the building, and all while addressing social distancing. Building principals have been looking at how they can flexibly use spaces in their building based on that ability to social distance in order to keep students together. So if a classroom is not large enough to keep the students in there, then they may be using other spaces such as the LMC or the gym, cafeterias, et cetera, in the building. We also know that we need to be flexible with our instruction in order to continue that instruction with our students should a school, a classroom, or a group of students need to be quarantined. As we mentioned, additional resources are going to be required. So new for us this year is that all K-5 students are going to be issued a one-to-one district iPad. And we will be embedding technology into our daily instruction so that we can support a smooth transition to blended learning when and if it's necessary. Be providing professional development as well as collaboration time to our staff, not only on essential standards for their instruction, but best practices with technology integration. Some of that's also going to come from focus groups where teachers are going to be sharing what worked well for them in the spring and what didn't work well. And then professional development as well on the effective use of this tool for learning and providing feedback to students. We will be continuing to use our standards-based grading to communicate with our students and families on student progress, regardless of whether we are face-to-face or using that blended learning model. Our teachers are also going to continue, just like they have always in the past, to quickly identify students that are struggling to engage. They'll be working with our administration and people support services staff to address barriers that arise for our students and families. Not on this slide, the elementary principal group, as well as a county group of elementary administrators, have also created a detailed plan on all of the routines and procedures that support a smooth and effective running of an elementary school and a classroom. And so, and those are all based on the different colors of the county grid. We did submit that plan to the county for approval last Thursday, and currently, right now, principals are beginning to share this with elementary staff and their leadership teams to really begin what I think is going to be the next step, the very challenging work of, so how are they going to meet the guidelines that are in this grid in not only their buildings but in their classrooms? And that grid has about 30, right now, it's got about 37 or 38 different procedures. Everything from entering into the school, what that will look like in an elementary school, what and when can we have before school recess? When we do have recess, when can we play on the playground equipment? And everything from use of technology, passing in the hallways, how we're going to space desks, how we're going to provide meals in classrooms to students, how we're going to do small group work, what our specials are going to look like, how we address our HPL guidance, assemblies, et cetera. Like I said, there's right now about 37 or 38 routines and procedures that we have identified, and that continues to grow, and it grew today. And we actually addressed, to Dawn's question earlier, how we are going to address snacks and birthday treats and bathrooming when it's planned and unplanned, et cetera. So that continues to grow. I would expect as this begins to get shared with our classroom teachers, they will begin to think of additional routines and procedures that we need to think about and put into the grid and get county approval.
So I will go ahead and turn that over to Stacy to talk about the secondary level.
Any questions at this time?
I guess a question I have is, I'm glad that we're looking at prioritizing face-to-face instruction for K-5 learning. I think that's important. I'm just wondering, what does that look like in practice? Our students say that would normally go to Emerson. Is there going to be enough classrooms for all of those students to socially distance? And if not, where would they locate to if we have to focus on, for example, right now, 10 people to a room maximum?
Yeah, so the approval that the county has given us is that if we can maintain 36 square feet per student in a classroom, then, or in a space, then we can keep those groups together. So that's what the, at this point, principals have been working with buildings and grounds, and they've got detailed plans of their building and the square footage per classroom space and other spaces. So they're looking right now at what their current classroom numbers are, factoring in the 36 square feet per student, also looking at how the room is configured. That's where some of the removal of additional furniture comes in. And they're determining, well, at this point, there is not a principal that said they cannot keep their kids at Emerson or any other school. So we'll be able to guarantee students get to stay in their home school. Where the location will be, if we are in orange or red, could change. So a fifth-grade classroom that might have 27 students in it, the county has given us approval for those 27 students to stay together, so we don't have to break them down into two groups of 15. But they may not, under orange or red, they may not be learning in their classroom space. They might take up half of a gym, and so their desks and different instructional materials will be moved to the gym so that they can stay together. We just feel strongly at the elementary level, those relationships are so critical for our students, that to have them going back and forth to this week because we're in orange, or because we're in yellow, I'm with my classroom teacher, and then next week I'm in orange, and now all of a sudden the title teacher or ELL teacher or someone else is my homeroom teacher for two or three weeks, that we didn't feel that that was in the best interests of our students. So the county has been wonderful in working with us to come up with a plan that honors that and as well as ensures the safety of our students.
Thank you, Shelley, and to be clear, I'm not picking on Emerson, that's where my kids went, so that's why I chose Emerson. I just wanted to be clear about that.
One source of confusion... One source of confusion that has been out there is that the DPI, in putting out their guidance document, sprinkled throughout it, this ratio of 10 to 1. And they have since pulled that back and indicated that we need to work with our local county health departments to determine what the appropriate number is based on our local conditions. And so that has led to a little bit of confusion and we worked with DPI to get that fixed.
Yeah, I will add, we did present three different models to the county with one of them being able to ensure that we had the number of students down to 15 or less or potentially even smaller, but that would necessitate either a student working with someone throughout the day that may not have had, for example, with fifth grade, may not have taught fifth grade. So they would have provided support. Or they could have been rotating through the three-grade level teachers and having another person also providing help and support in a different location. And the county felt strongly that the more we can limit students interacting with other adults and we can just keep those cohorts better, that would be better. So that is why they did approve the one that said we could have, you know, I think on their, the grid system that came out last Wednesday or Thursday, it did sit there and say we could have up to 30. So they really did work with us to make sure that we didn't have a classroom where we couldn't problem solve that to keep them together and ensure that instruction continued with highly qualified staff.
With that, Stacy will talk about 612.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Stacy Eversen, Director of Secondary Education. So we too, at the secondary level, have been using various documents to guide our thinking. The recent information guidelines released last week, our secondary focus groups have been working on a configuration at the secondary level. So let me speak about middle school to start with. We, each secondary school, middle schools and high schools, have a focus group that includes teachers and other faculty members that are attempting to identify the configuration that may work best at each site. Now, keep in mind that each middle school has its own separate set of nuances and circumstances that make each middle school unique. But our ultimate goal is for students in grade six through eight to, all students attend school every day. That is the ultimate goal. We are busy working with our individual focus groups to identify the barriers to that, and there are some. As Shelley mentioned, we were glad to see that there may be this range of capacity per classroom. But of course, each classroom is not necessarily the same size or dimensions. In many cases, we have tables and not desks that can be spaced apart. So we're busy at finding ways that we can build cohorts that would allow for every student to attend school every day. We meet weekly and we have a collaborative group of cohorts, or excuse me, middle school focus groups that are working together to compare and contrast our models. Because one of our tights is that we wish not for one middle school to operate differently than another. So we intend to have a model that we share with the county health department within the next 10 days or so to be sure that we have a plan that is going to work. At the high school level, we also have focus groups that are working with, these are building leadership teams that are working with principals. And because of the large quantity of high school students coming and going each day, it is rather difficult to imagine, reimagine school in such a way that would allow every student to attend school every day. So we're identifying cohorts that would either be sorted by letter of the last name, allowing students to attend school in a pattern, perhaps an AB pattern and a CD pattern, whereby students are introduced to some direct instruction on specific days of the week with follow-up instruction online and independent study on days that they are not scheduled to be in school face-to-face. The pattern of that is to be determined and these individual focus groups will be working to identify the best pattern that we can put in place for our high school students. Just looking at the slide that's being presented, of course, we're thinking of terms, teachers have a daunting task to be able to consider all of the factors that go into this blended learning concept. Some students will be learning in real time and some students may be learning in an asynchronous pattern. So we're working with our teaching staff to be sure that teachers are prepared for that reality. And like any other year, but this year even more so, our teachers and principals will be working to identify students that are not learning well in this blended learning environment on the days that they may be learning from home or an alternative location. So we have some added measures in place to support students and families that may be finding difficulty with a remote learning environment. We'll continue with our efforts to make sure that all students have access to devices and an internet connection that's reliable for them and working on other alternative locations in our community that students could be learning from in the event they are not able to be in our classrooms. You know, other efforts, lots of details for us to sort out. And I know anxiety is high out there for our teachers and for our families. And so we're working hard to make sure we stay focused on a schedule that works first and then identify all the details that'll go along with this, including how we'll handle lockers in our middle schools and high schools and how we will reduce transitions for students. So similar to the elementary focus, the high school and middle schools are also talking about ways that students can stay in classrooms and avoid the multiple transitions they may have encountered on a typical school year and empower the teachers to be transitioning in lieu of students. So those are just some examples of the details that we're sorting through. Meals have been discussed tonight as well. And so at the middle school and high school level, we also will be working on a schedule whereby students are eating in classrooms and avoiding that large group gathering in an auditorium or cafeteria. Of particular interest at the secondary level, we plan to return to letter grades for sixth through 12th grade. You'll notice the slide mentions that standards-based grading is pending. It should be no surprise, I think, at the secondary level, we've been exploring some progressive grading practices that will lend itself well to the equity work that our district is doing. And that includes grading by standard. So more to come on some of those practices. But nevertheless, we, our intention is to return to letter grades in the fall. Flexibility and communication. We, at the secondary level, recognize that communication is going to be key. And I think Dr. Engel mentioned at the start of our meeting tonight. Of course, we have COVID confusion. There's no doubt that communication is key and we have to communicate now more than ever. An example of that is I think there has been some fear among teachers that decisions are being made for them. I'm sure there is fear among families that decisions are being made for them, not with them. However, I think sometimes that can be a result of, for example, tonight sounded like a plan that was being presented as though it was done and solidified. But it's important for us all to realize we have to be flexible and elastic as these plans unfold. So hopefully, our teachers are recognizing that we are working with our building leadership teams and that no idea is a bad idea. We are casting our nets wide and broad, or broad and deep to make sure that we've captured the ideas of all, to be sure that we've put a good plan in place that will meet the needs of all of our families and our students.
One question for you, Patty. You talked about lunches and not having them in the cafeteria and having them in the classrooms, et cetera. That just made me go back to high school and think about open campus and going out to lunch and those types of things. How is that going to work? Is it going to be no longer allowed to go off campus? Or, and they have to stay within the school grounds? Or, and then if they do, are able to go off campus, are they going to have to be like re-scanned before they come in? Or have we thought about that process at all?
Yes, we have.
I figured you did, but gotta ask.
Actually, we had our school nutrition supervisors meeting with the county and other school districts. And there is something that I haven't even had a chance to discuss with the leadership team about considering a closed campus at the secondary level just for this year. It might just be a necessity.
And then I have one other crazy thought. So if we're doing lunches in classrooms, et cetera, are we then increasing our disposables? And if we are increasing our disposables, are we doing anything to make them environmentally friendly?
That's a good question because absolutely we are increasing our disposables. We have to have paper cups by the sinks. We have to have all our food individually wrapped, including your condiments have to be individually contained. Yeah, there's a lot of talk about the waste, but as far as environment, environmentally safe, that would be the next step.
I know it's a lot, thank you for thinking of all of those things. And I know it's not just Patty. Thank you all of you for thinking about all of these different scenarios.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Thank you all for this hard work. And it sounds good that it's all collaborative. My other question, the one thing that keeps coming to my mind is electives. How are they going to be offered, if they're going to be offered? Can you shine some light on some of the conversations that you all have had with them?
Did you say elections, Shondell?
Electives, Jim.
Electives, I'm sorry. That may be a secondary piece. This is Stacy again and just want to make it known. I think teachers were asking me last week, for example, a myth may have traveled that electives would not be offered. That is not our goal. We intend for electives to be as important as any other course at the secondary level. We may have some unique riddles to solve when it comes to our electives because sometimes they can be the largest class sizes with the smallest classrooms. So we have some trickery to figure out in order to make them work, which in part could be why the middle school may offer the solution that we move away from all students every day to a model that allows some students every day to make sure that we have room for students to be in elective classrooms. But teachers are working on creative ways to blend learning, face-to-face instruction combined with online learning. And then, of course, how can we create safe classroom social distancing to accommodate all of the students that have registered and enrolled in these elective courses?
Yeah, those are top of mind. How do we conduct a choir class that might have 100 students in it? How do we conduct a family consumer science class where there's a cooking unit and you're side-by-each in eight different stations? How do we do a construction class where you're working together on a scaffolding with, you know? So I think we want to be able to offer everything. And I don't think we have plans to intentionally cancel anything. We just have to figure out how to do it safely and solve those riddles, as Stacy indicated. Any other questions on 612? Then I will turn it over to Dr. Lahaki on the Cooley Region Virtual Academy.
Rolls off the tongue, right? Well, let's start with the why. First of all, in the spring, we surveyed our parents, students, and staff about what went well and what were opportunities for improvement this last spring. And we keep, there were a lot of great takeaways that were infused in the plans that you're looking at tonight. But one clear thread that we saw was there was a certain element of the school population that really enjoyed online learning and wanted to do more of it, but do it a little differently. And that's not unique to lacrosse. So in discussion with other districts in our area, they had the same data when they did the remote learning surveys in the spring. So we decided to band together as student or as lacrosse areas, school districts, and come up with a 100% online experience for K-12. It's an ambitious leap for sure, but in lacrosse, it's less ambitious than most. And I'll explain why in just a little bit. It's an academy, not a school, meaning that when students enroll, if they want to be in this academy, they are still enrolled in their home school. And that's important to know because they still have access then to counselors, social workers, co-curricular, extracurricular activities within their school. And that gives us a bit of an advantage, I would say, over other 100% online schools that may be around the state, is that local connection to school. We don't know, we can't anticipate what our COVID-19 outlook will look like for the whole year. So there is the opportunity in this model to move from 100% online to, hey, I'm comfortable now and I would like to move back to a face-to-face environment. We would be able to transition students back. With that being said, for scope and sequence of curriculum, for the resource costs for districts, we will ask that people make a commitment for one semester to the Cooley Region Virtual Academy if that's the avenue that they want to take. What does the schedule look like? Every day of learning for students. Four of the days will be e-learning, meaning there will be direct contact with staff in some way. A rigorous curriculum. The fifth day, there may be more projects, designated office hours for staff, a student support catch-up day, and it's a day that we'll use for the professional development of the staff that elect to be in the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. Enrollment matters, so numbers matter. In July 1st, we sent out an interest survey to our district. We received back over 1,500 responses that were roughly, it's roughly 25% of our district. Based on what we saw, there were 9% of our students that were interested in the academy with about another 23% that were, I'm interested, but tell me more. So those are families that we need to reach back out to with more information. Tonight, we have this presentation. I also have a number of documents ready to go pending board approval of this approach to the 100% online that I can distribute with staff and parents so they can make informed decisions regarding enrollment. Enrollment, we need sooner rather than later. So when looking at the district reopening plan, there'll also be the Cooley Region Virtual Academy plan that people can look at side-by-side and decide, what is the right fit for me? I could see families that are interested in consistency, that this is 100% online, no matter what the case outlook looks like. This may be an approach that they're interested in, just for consistency at home. Our enrollment window will be from July 17th to July 27th. It's a tight window and we will do whatever we can to get word out to our parents so they can sign up during that time. Because imagine planning for an event and you don't know if there's 20 people coming or 2,000. Staffing implications, training, where, how to handle the scope of what we're trying to put together really depends on a good enrollment number during that 10-day window. Devices and access. All students K-12 have a district device. Home internet will be something that's vital for students if that is ever a problem. Uh, home internet will be something that's vital for students. If that is ever a problem, that is something we'll work through with the individual family to make sure that every student, uh, would have an opportunity, uh, for the virtual academy. Resources. So this is, uh, earlier I mentioned that for lacrosse, this is a little different than our partner districts in the Cooley Region Virtual Academy, which are Holman, Wasalem, Onalaska and Bangor, uh, that we're partnering with. Uh, for us, it's an expansion of our currently successful e-scholars program that we had at the high school. In a typical year, we have 1,000 course enrollments in e-scholars. The difference is scope. Uh, so we are moving this down to kindergarten. Um, therefore we'll have, uh, more enrollments than we'll have, uh, traditionally. But we offer two student, two pathways for our students in lacrosse. One would be the e-scholar path would be, I'm only interested in one or two courses perhaps. And then the Cooley Region Virtual Academy is 100% uh, full-time online. We use, uh, we're part of the Wisconsin E-School Network, so the curriculum that we use, it, they, there's basically five national vendors in the country. Uh, we'll have access to over 200, three, 200 to 300 courses, uh, that we'll be able to provide, um, to our students. At the elementary level, that includes electives. At the high school, there are many electives, uh, uh, included as well. Our starting point for the middle school and high school students will be, what did you sign up for, for the fall of this year? Uh, and as we get those enrollments, uh, those are where we have conversations of, hey, we can offer this, uh, have you considered this particular course? Uh, because we'll, we'll try to, um, navigate that pathway of staffing to make sure we have the right teachers, teaching the right students in the right courses. At the middle school and high school, we also have other opportunities as well. And that is part of the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. We run, may run into situations where we have an odd number of students, um, not enough to start a new class, but still a demand. We, we are using the same curriculum amongst the five districts. So it is quite possible that we'll have students from Onalaska that are taught by a lacrosse teacher. Or we may have lacrosse students that are taught by a Holman teacher. So the collaboration, um, that's been going on so far, uh, between the five districts will need to continue. And that's for that fifth day of teacher prep, so we can work on curriculum and, and make a tight, rigorous, uh, educational experience for our students. Um, a few other things, uh. Yeah, I do have two documents going out. One is a parent handbook. Uh, that's a parent handbook that's been worked on with teachers from the five districts. And specifically, I, I use the, the e-scholar teachers that we have in lacrosse, um, to work out what, what works in this handbook, what doesn't work in this handbook. And I'll clearly put out there that it's a draft in that, uh, I'd like to be able to share that with parents soon, um, so they can make some decisions. I also have, uh, based on the survey that we did July 1st, a frequently asked question document. Of the 1,500 responses I mentioned earlier that 23% were unsure or wanted to be contacted with more information. So I want to, uh, connect directly with those families via email with this frequently asked questions. Uh, as I went through the 1,500 responses, uh, there were common themes that came up. So I wanted to specifically identify those themes, the families, uh, to, to answer as many questions as I can, um, but also make myself available to them, uh, for those more specific follow-up questions. That is a 10,000-foot overview of the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. Uh, do you have any questions?
I have two questions, Dr. Lahaki. The first question is, are there any minimums that we need to be aware of for any of those grade levels that we have to hit for this, uh, academy to run?
I don't think we'll hit a minimum. Uh, if you're talking about class size, uh, we want our class sizes to be roughly the same of what they would be at in each district involved. Uh, there are school district policies within each school district that identifies particular numbers. So it's a rough estimate. I would anticipate anywhere from 18 to 30 students in a particular class. If we do run into a section, uh, where, let's say we have 35 students, that's where we would take those five students and be able to share them with another district that maybe had five students and then another student, district maybe had those five extra students. So we can combine together to have one section of a course that might have, uh, students from all five districts in it.
Thank you. The, the second question I have, and this is just a hypothetical. Um, let's say we get into the school year and we're shut, we're, we have to shut things down again. Is this virtual academy, would this be a good model for, to move students in, into that academy? Or, um, is it gonna be flexible? Would it be flexible enough to, to do that?
Well, it's a good, it's a good question. And I, I had to chuckle a little bit when you said hypothetical, uh, because that is generally the world we live in right now. Um, when we, so when students commit to the Cooley Region Virtual Academy, we want them to stay for a semester. That's because we have staffing, uh, resource costs, uh, we were purchasing curriculum, a learning management system. There are certain expenditures that go with, so we'd like a commitment on the student's behalf. If a student, let's say mid-year, year wanted to join us, great, we can do that. What we would want to avoid though is, hey, I'm quarantined for 14 days. Can I join the Cooley Region Virtual Academy for 14 days and then transition back to the classroom? In that case, I would refer back to the models that were shared by Shelley and Stacy tonight, um, for those short-term closures. But this would be the option if somebody was looking for a long-term, um, which is a long-winded answer to your question. Yes, we can accept enrollments throughout the year. Uh, but there would be some staffing reallocations that might have to happen if that becomes widespread.
Okay, and, um, I think this was, and I always said two questions, but that prompted one more real quick. Um, and I think this was alluded to earlier. I'm sorry, I can't remember by who, but, you know, we have teachers, for example, who have immune systems that are compromised for, will, will they be prioritized in terms of filling those, those teaching positions?
We have great teachers, right? And, and we have teachers that, uh, have, do have some health issues where this is a very attractive option. And I've been contacted by a number of teachers where they're extremely interested in this model, um, for that reason. Uh, with that being said, um, it will be more difficult at the middle school and high school because I anticipate there'll be less full-time, uh, courses, it'll, or, uh, teachers, it'll be more section by section. Um, so it might be part days online, uh. It, it's gonna be tricky and that's where enrollment matters so much, that window of the 17th to the 27th. The more accurate numbers we can get, the more we can, uh, uh, make some of those situations work.
Thank you, Dr. Lahaki.
Any other questions regarding the online learning option we are intending to provide?
Um, okay, so I, I do have one. Realizing that online instruction can be, um, challenging not just for students but for instructors, especially in terms of the load of work that is required. Is there going to be a consideration for faculty load? Uh, if somebody is assigned an online course versus just traditional face-to-face?
We, we are purchasing the curriculum. Uh, so, so the normal work that comes with the day-to-day development of curriculum, uh, our, it involves curriculum, resources and assessments built in. With that being said, I know our teachers and they'll find ways to enhance and make that curriculum even stronger. Uh, but we want the focus to be on building relationships, engaging, engaging students. So, so the load for the Cooley Region, Region Virtual Academy, I hope is a different kind of load, uh, in that they're not developing the curriculum as much as they are, uh, connecting with students.
Okay, so, and, and just to clarify, so this virtual academy would be asynchronous online environment or an asynchronous online environment?
It would have elements of both.
Okay, and I'm just thinking, when it comes to an asynchronous online environment, there's gonna be a lot more email, a lot more communication potentially between the student and the instructor. And so that's where I was thinking in terms of a load, that you may get students who, uh, uh, do their best work at 11:59 PM on Sunday evening and need an answer relatively soon because things are due at midnight. Um, and so I was just thinking about, uh, what that looks like and could it be a challenge?
Sure, within the courses, there are pacing plans. So you won't run into situations where there are hard and fast due dates. It's more of learning is the constant time in, in setting other variables. Uh, so in our e-scholar program currently, we have students that maybe don't check in every single day, but then on Saturday and Sunday, they're hard at work, uh, just because they have different commitments or whatever they have going on. Um, so that mixture of asynchronous and synchronous or live and off-live, uh, situations will be important.
And I think that's one of the reasons we're building in a day of teacher prep and student support and catch-up to kinda account for the different new demands on a teacher. Uh, so I think we're thoughtful about how this mode of instruction will be different than a, a traditional one.
I have a couple of questions. The first question is regards to everything that has been presented. Um, and this may be assumed, but maybe not. Will all of the charter schools also pretty much adhere to this format that was presented today by you all?
Students in the charter school, uh, can attend, uh, attend the Cooley Region Virtual Academy and stay enrolled in their charter school.
Okay, awesome. And then the other question, not complete, were you gonna say something, Eric?
No, no, after you.
Um, so I'm trying to think of the best way to phrase this, but I guess with the collaborating partners with the Cooley Region Virtual Academy, um, has there been any decision around numbers? So when we talk about, uh, how many students enroll, um, in each, like, school district or how are we gonna be account for some of those students? Has that been discussed?
Yes, uh, we, part of, part of the MOU, MOU in the, also the financial arrangements, we work through, um, what does equitable participation look like? So in lacrosse, we have 40%, 42% of the student population. Um, so we take on, uh, roughly 42% of, uh, staffing and some of the costs that are associated with this. And it's proportional based on the, uh, enrollments of the other districts as well.
Thank you.
One, one of our primary goals in creating this collaborative project was to avoid a situation where we're competing with neighboring districts for open enrollments. Uh, our goal is to educate our district residents to the best of our ability. We don't want our students forced to seek an option elsewhere because of the concerns that they have about COVID-19. And we also don't necessarily want a flood of students from other school districts because we provide an option that they're not able to provide either. And so that was a, a large reason for this collaborative project was to ensure that all of us have access to something that is a high-quality resource for all of the students in our districts. If things got to a point where we were bearing more of the load or Holman was bearing more of the load than others, we would revisit our agreement and talk about cost sharing. But at this point, we anticipate it to be an equitable relationship where we're generally servicing our own students. And where need be, we would, uh, jump onto some other district or they would jump onto ours in order to, to share this load.
And one other item that I didn't share was, uh, we're part of the Wisconsin E-School Network and we've always been. So sometimes we have students from Green Bay that end up taking courses with our lacrosse teachers. Or we may have, uh, some of our lacrosse teachers take a course from a teacher in Janesville. Uh, so this kind of collaborative relationship we've had, uh, in an online environment is, is one that we're accustomed to at the high school, but it's certainly, uh, uncharted waters for us K-8.
Any other questions on the virtual academy? Plenty of time to ask them later as well. And I will, uh, Ami talk about, um, specialized services.
Yeah, so within any of the models that we've discussed tonight, we're gonna have, um, learners with unique learning needs, whether they have an IEP in our, in special education, um, have a 504 accommodation plan or English learners within our, um, schools. And so, um, the one thing I wanna emphasize is that, um, this slide has a lot of statements that, um, kinda come across a little vague and that's almost by design because the nature of special education, 504 EL, is that, um, we have individualized plans for each student. And so I can't definitively tell you what things are going to look like for, um, students in special education because each of their teams is gonna work to design a plan that works for them. What I can say is that when it comes to the environments that they're, um, learning in, um, we, we're definitely gonna need to be looking at those social distancing guidance, um, to make sure that we can meet student needs. Um, whether staff will be pushing into classrooms, um, or pulling students out into special education spaces will again depend on the student. But we'll make sure that, um, we're following, um, really closely to health and safety guidelines of, um, staff that are going into classrooms, washing hands, making sure they're wearing masks, um, keeping distance from students that they aren't working directly with. When students are going into other settings, making sure that, um, we have good cleaning procedures in between groups of students and are maintaining social distancing as best as possible. Case loads may need to be reconfigured to allow this to happen. Um, one challenge that we're working through is for, we have a lot of itinerant staff that work across multiple buildings and, and any given day and work with students, um, from multiple classrooms. So we are gonna look at schedules creatively to limit the amount of travel that they're doing as much as possible and then make sure that we have, um, uh, protocols in place to make sure that, um, they are, um, keeping schedules so we can contact trace back if there happens to be positive cases and know exactly where they were on any given day. But then also make sure that there are, um, that they are maintaining, um, safe health protocols, um, after each student that they see. Obviously, this is gonna require some additional resources. Um, those resources could look like we had a meeting today looking at tele, teletherapy platforms for our speech and OT and PT providers so that they can possibly be doing some virtual therapy, um, to, uh, assistive technology devices for students, um, that may need those to engage with the technology components of the different learning models. Obviously throughout this, um, communication with parents, with families, with, um, IEP teams, um, with, uh, 504 teams or, um, EL staff is gonna be critical, um, and we'll make sure that that is, um, ongoing, um, and on a regular basis. And then the big piece on this slide really is understanding that, um, for our learners with unique learning needs, it, it's really challenging to, to switch between, um, face-to-face learning to, uh, remote learning. Um, and so we wanna make sure that we have a plan in place before those things happen to know how we're gonna support those students. One thing we saw when we made the switch in the spring to all online learning, learning is we lost a lot of kids, um, because we, we weren't, we, we didn't have days to prepare plans for them and we had to plan as we went. And so we wanna make sure that we have plans that account for how do we engage students when they have to switch to a short-term or long-term online environment? Um, how do we make sure that they can access all of the instruction, whether it's face-to-face or whether it's online? Um, and then what accommodations do they need and what additional supports do they need? Recognizing that for, um, potentially for some students that are enrolled in the, uh, virtual academy, they may receive some of their special education services in person. Or some may receive their services all remotely. Um, and so, uh, those are the things that we will make sure that we have plans for, um, before the school year starts so that, um, families, um, can give input on that and families and students know exactly what that's gonna look like as, as they move forward. Any questions about that?
Hey, Ami, I do have a quick question.
What?
Um, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we do provide some of those services to students who are in private schools here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so what kind of collaboration is happening around that piece of it?
Yeah, so those private schools have been part of those, uh, regular meetings with the county, um, and in different work groups. Um, so they are planning right alongside the public schools on their reopening plans. Um, and we will, the hope is that they have similar protocols. Um, but we have, uh, just a handful of staff, um, two to three that work with our private schools to provide, uh, services for students with disabilities. Um, and then I think we have one that works, um, on the title side of things. Um, and we will make sure that those staff are following the protocols of the private schools. Um, but then also if they are coming back into, back into our setting after being in a, a private school setting, that we've done proper, um, handwashing, um, making sure that they have done everything they need to, to enter the building, screening of them upon entry, things like that. But we'll continue to pro, provide those services.
Thank you.
Mr. Teff will lead us through the next couple of slides.
Okay, good evening, board members. For new board members, I think this is the first time I'm presenting with some of our new board members. I'm Kurt Teff, Director of Community Services, so welcome. Next couple of slides, I'm going to be covering some information on supporting positive behavior, social emotional learning, and mental health supports. And while this topic comes, you know, toward the end of our instructional model, we really believe that this will be critical, critical work as we have students return to learning. Do want to start with positive behavior and social emotional learning. So tonight, you've heard, you know, in the last ninety minutes or so, lots of adjustments in terms of how systems and protocols and procedures are going to work. On the, on the other side of that are students who are going to be coming back to schools in that have, have really changed in a lot of ways. And so as these plans are coming together, we're thinking, and we have a team that's working on really thinking it through those changes through the lens of children. We have a team working at the 4K, 5K level, we have an elementary team, and we have a secondary team, and really trying to clarify expectations, responsibilities for different learners. And again, thinking that we will have learners who will be totally online, we'll have some learners who will be learning face-to-face at times, and some who for different circumstances will, will be learning more remotely. Along with that, we think that caregivers could really help support with some pre-teaching. And so our, our teams are developing what we call pre-teaching resources. This, these are just resources that caregivers can work with their students on before school starts, so they can know what to expect. Can, we plan to cover just a range of topics, and we hope to be able to even shoot some, some video for especially younger students, so they know what boarding the bus is going to look like and coming into the school. So none of that will be a surprise to them. It'll look somewhat, you know, familiar. Think an important part of returning to learning is making sure that our schools are, are providing instruction in new expectations and procedures and routines, to really make sure students understand if we have expectations around physical distancing, what does that look like in developmentally appropriate ways? If we're going to be wearing masks, what does that look like, and how do we get comfortable with that? We also believe that we need to support students' social emotional learning. So one component of it is definitely learning skills around how to regulate emotions and problem solve and get along with others. But we've had students who've missed just an incredible amount of time outside of school, and a big part of social emotional learning is practice. And, and that's where for kids who've, you know, been at home away from peers and friends and, and learning, we just need to put time into that and give, give students opportunities to practice those skills. Like Dr. Engel and Ms. Brozsky mentioned earlier, in the spring, we did have students that really drifted away from learning. And so one of the things that we're working on with county partners is really an attendance and engagement strategy, a way to intervene early to monitor engagement and, and pace, and be able to offer intervention supports early enough where students get, don't get so far behind on their learning that they just feel it's hopeless to, to get back on track. We'll have a broad range of interventions and supports. We're really going to need to think, think through what do supports look like. We're having lots of conversations about, you know, what does it look like to deliver interventions and supports right within classroom settings as much as possible to really honor, you know, keeping cohorts together and the like. So before I go on to mental health supports, I'll pause for any questions or feedback. Okay. So the other component, and this is a critical component, I was just on a call this past week with UW-Madison, and one of the things that they cited was within the first month of shutdown, there was upwards of a twenty percent increase in students experiencing anxiety and depression. And so we are anticipating mental health needs upon reopening schools. And so we're focusing a lot, a lot of topics. And again, this is, this is really a summary of a, a lot of work that's been going into this area. Of course, making sure that our schools are, are welcoming positive, safe environments as we're work, as we're welcoming students back to learning. We think it's helpful to be able to give caregivers resources to help support their students' mental wellness. And so we were seeking some input from some community stakeholders who are offering some of these trainings within the community to develop resources for caregivers. We believe early outreach is going to be important. Parents know their, parents and caregivers know their children best. And so we do want to know if they're anticipating that their student is already struggling or, or might struggle with returning. We can get out in front of that, begin thinking about, okay, what does this transition back to school look like and, and intervene early? We're working on different ways to be able to monitor student needs, making sure that staff really know to monitor for those needs, how to recognize early warning signs. We've talked a little bit about screening and the role that screening could play as, as schools reopen. Typically, screening will happen after four to eight weeks in school is, is kind of the target time when we'd want to be implementing some screening efforts. But monitoring student needs can happen the first date. And again, this is regardless of they're online or they're in, in a blended learning environment. School-based student services. So we do want to make sure that our school counselors, social workers, school psychologists are, are at the ready to be able to respond to emerging needs. So we're talking just about workflows and making sure that those folks are available to respond. For students who will be learning at home, we want to make sure that our student services providers can provide what we call teleservices. So this is student services delivered through video conferencing. Student teletherapy, for the time being, most of our students who are receiving community mental health services are receiving those through teletherapy. Historically, we've had about forty-five different community mental health providers providing onsite community mental health in schools. While we're in red and orange, that, that just won't be able to be possible. We are leaving, leaving it open that, you know, if there is a situation that warrants it, we'll consider it. But most of those providers have already moved to teletherapy, so we're going to be working to make sure that those components stay intact and that students continue to have access to those vital services. Finally, finally, you know, we know that, you know, as much as this has impacted students, this had an impact on staff too, as they think about how teaching and learning has changed, how their role has changed, and, you know, some of the concerns or anxieties that they have about the whole situation. So we do want to make sure we're providing staff flexibility, that we're providing outreach and support, you know, to make sure that our staff are well and, and ready to welcome students back. Questions on that component? Okay, thank you.
Okay, this might be me, is that right, Dr. Engel?
Yes, I think you're up. I was trying to remember off, and I, yes.
Yes. So again, Stacy Iverson, extracurricular activities. So a great slide to follow mental health. We know that extracurricular activities, K-12, are very important to students. Sometimes it can be the reason they socialize or do not socialize in our public schools. So with that said, our activity and athletic directors are of course working with the county health department and WIAA to make sure that we are making decisions consistent with this health and safety guidelines. I'm sure everyone is wondering what the fall season of sports and activities will look like. So we are in the middle of making decisions, and just like public schools are partnering, our athletic and, and activity directors are partnering with our neighboring school districts as well, to be sure that we are not making decisions that are not sensible as compared to our, our neighbors. Also, in the event that we find ourselves in orange and red, where a, a particular sport season may find the season canceled, or in part canceled, our coaches and our supervisors of extracurriculars are working on ways currently that we can keep students connected. You know, obviously, there's a big difference between keeping our, our football team together and practicing as compared to, say, an art club that might be able to meet remotely. There's obviously some compare and contrast that, that takes place between the difference of our sports and our activities. But I just want to make it known that when possible, we are going to make every effort to be sure that students find themselves in the same teams and family-like atmospheres that they experienced any other year. We know that these can be very important reasons for students to attend and learn during the regular school day when they feel a part of these extracurricular, extracurricular activities and sport seasons after school. So keep, keep, stay tuned. We are going to communicate with you and with our stakeholders every step of the way as we make these decisions for the fall and for the upcoming school year.
Any questions on extracurricular activities? This is one that's really still up in the air until we get more guidance. We've started some preliminary training to get some things going back on now that we've moved back into orange, but, you know, we're really waiting on guidance from WIAA, and want to make sure that we collaborate with our conference and the state to, to get this one right.
That's correct. There were some very excited people when we hit orange last week, but orange won't, won't do it. We're going to need to get a little better than orange to, to see all of the seasons come to full play this fall.
I believe Dr. Harsy will take stakeholder input.
Yeah, this slide has been, based on all the information shared thus far, has been rendered pretty much redundant, but I do have just a couple of thoughts. You know, tonight throughout the region, the school boards are being presented with reopening plans, just like our Board of Education is. And I will tell you that they mirror in large degree what, what our board is seeing. And we know that, and we're confident in saying that, because we walked hand-in-hand with a lot of our district friends throughout the region. To Dr. Cooperstool's point before, and this has been a public school effort, a private parochial school effort, we're all in the same meetings from Dr. Engel's position as superintendent, through our directors of curriculum, our elementary and secondary directors, community services, pupil services. One of the folks you have not heard from tonight, but believe me, he's been connecting and collaborating, Michael St. Pierre, with our Department of Information Technology. So there's been a lot of people who've been out of necessity and out of effective planning, a lot of people have been collaborating. And those plans, once September 1st comes, certainly there'll be degrees of differences, but we do have the same guidance documents that we're working around. So we feel pretty confident. We do, we do need, and our teachers need, and our community is looking to bring from the macro level, which obviously that's what we're bringing to, to get in the weeds a little bit, the, the micro level. And we're hoping after tonight and, and with, with some board support, we'll be able to, with some energy, go forward with that. Every subcategory here has a lot of depth behind it. As you can see when you ask questions, you can see there's a lot of detail that we still have to roll up our sleeves on. But when we talk with our district friends from around the state, we are on pace with, with where a lot of school districts in the state of Wisconsin are currently. A, a big part of this obviously is how we communicate going forward. We would, well, sometimes we can't speak with certainty, we can speak with clarity. And so the next slide, Dr. Engel will talk a little bit about our communication efforts here going, going forward.
So communication is going to be essential as we move forward. Like I indicated earlier, I intend to communicate with the school board three times a week as we develop plans. We want you to have information when you need it to be able to communicate with the public, to weigh in. And, you know, we may need one or two more special board meetings as we move forward, depending on how circumstances develop. Hopefully, you know, things settle down and our decisions are easy, but they may also be challenging and, and dramatic even. So we'll meet as often as necessary to, to, so that you can weigh in on the most crucial decisions. We also intend to email our, our families regularly, provide information on social media, and our website is really going to be crucial as the most current information with updated FAQs and updated plans. And so also considering our, our families that need alternate communication methods as well to get to them the best way possible. And then one thing that's important too is notifications for positive cases. This is something we've worked very closely with the county health department with to identify what the most appropriate procedure is. And so we're going to notify families as quickly as possible, hopefully within the day. But depending on when we get notified, you know, it might be next day notification. Every family in a building will be notified if there was a positive case in that building. And we're going to be very careful not to share personally identifiable information to ensure that we follow FERPA laws as well as HIPAA where it's, it's required. So communication is going to be essential for, for our, our community to feel comfortable returning to school.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So I imagine there'll be a, a number of families that have questions as we go forward. You've provided some means for folks to access updated information via our website, for example. But if board members are asked, for example, who, whom question should be filtered to? Is there any central place that that's going to happen? Or any information you have at this time that we can provide?
We're going to provide an option on the website for feedback or questions that will be checked, you know, throughout the day to be able to answer questions, and that will be used to help generate an updated FAQ, you know. So we're hopeful that folks can, hey, first come to the website, read the FAQ. If your question's not there, fill out this form, and we'll get that answer up there as soon as possible. And then, you know, there's always the option to call the district office, you know, and we'll filter that call to the right person, you know. So that is always an option for folks as well. You know, it might be a question about elementary, but it might be a technical question, tech, technology question about elementary. And so we can help filter that to the right person. So I, I would say, you know, call the district office, and we'll make sure that the right person gets that information. As we get closer to school opening, the, the critical person will be the, the, the administrative assistant in the buildings. And that might even be the best point of contact for most, for most families. That's who they're familiar with, that's who they know. You know, call your administrative assistant, they're working throughout the summer. We can, they can filter that information to the right individual as well. And anyone else on the team can correct me if I've spoken out of turn here as far as the most appropriate way to, to get your questions answered.
Thank you.
Next steps. So this was an important date for us to get this information to you. We plan on making any modifications or adjustments this evening and tomorrow morning, and then getting this information out to the staff, even tonight, and our community, and posting all this information tomorrow. Obviously, with a, a public school board meeting, it's, 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 it's live right now. However, this is still a draft, and we want your feedback and input before we move forward. That's crucial. So we'll get all of this posted and ready to go out tomorrow. We should have Cooley Region Virtual Academy handbooks and FAQs ready this week. Hopefully, we can get that up tomorrow or the following day. And then registration opens up, and that's really going to be a critical piece for us to know from the community what the interest is, and that's going to initiate our staffing movements at that point. July 27th, we have summer school starting for Northside and Hamilton, and And that will be a useful opportunity to, you know, provide a necessary education for our students, but also be a learning experience for us to modify and adjust as we move forward. And then on a bi-weekly basis, we'll be having scheduled communication updates. But I'm also working with Mr. Marku, our communications coordinator, on maybe a weekly press release for updates with opportunities for questions and feedback. So our parents have an opportunity to get their questions answered. We've noticed that the county health department has had a lot of success with that format for COVID-19. And we might try to mirror something similar for schools so that parents can get the information they need on a timely basis. We can put out critical information on a timely basis. The website, like I said, will be crucial as we move forward. And the next steps, you know, we move forward with this high-level plan that's a little bit more general. The really difficult, important work will now be filling in the details. And we've done some of that, but we really need to expand our staff involvement and expand our family input. All those questions that they ask will inform our decisions as we move forward. We want to be responsive to our community's needs. And Stacy Eversen is going to relay a couple of those questions and curriculum and instruction thoughts that we really have as we move forward. Once again, I had mentioned humility at the front. We have some humility as we approach this in that we don't have all the answers yet. And that is where we're asking for a little grace. And so here are some of the questions that we're really thinking deeply about to provide the best possible education for our students.
Okay, thank you. So reimagining teaching and learning. The next couple of slides might help describe what we're talking about when we think of blended learning. I'm sure it's become obvious by now that blended really refers to this notion that some learning will occur face to face while some learning may occur online. And the concept here is that we recognize that because of our pandemic planning, we may have students that coming and going from our classrooms. Some days they may be able to be with us and some days not, based on potential exposure to the virus. So teachers will be focusing on what is, what concepts, what learning targets are must knows as compared to the nice-to-know learning standards per course, per unit. We refer to those as superhero power standards, the standards that we know every student must be able to know and do before the end of a course. Teachers will also begin to sort through their learning standards, looking through the lens of what could I be teaching face to face in the most effective way possible as compared to what learning standards could be focused and taught well and learned well online. So we're going to talk about that face to face and online and what might be in the middle in terms of blended learning. And as you've heard others talk about tonight, we recognize that not all students will be able to learn well online. And we have to have measures in place that will assist our students and our families to be able to learn in this blended learning environment of the future. The next slide sort of goes deeper at what does that blended, blending of essential learning standards look like? What does good teaching look like? We can expect that our traditional learning environments of the future simply will look different forever. That blended learning piece will be new for teachers to begin to unravel how to maximize the use of time with students. We know that at any given time, teachers and students may be working real time, a synchronous learning environment. And we may have students, especially at the secondary level, that may be in charge of childcare at home, for example, that may need to learn in an asynchronous learning environment. So as our cultures inside of our schools begin to collaborate, communication is going to be key between teachers and our homes to be sure that we have students that are able to keep up with their learning standards per course this given school year. How we measure learning may look different. So we know that having students involved in the measurement of their own learning is very powerful. We may see teachers relying more and more on the excitement, for example, that students can have watching their own growth in a course. How we assess students and how we measure that learning may look very different in the years to come as we become better and better at this blended learning environment. And of course, again, what are we going to do if learning does not occur? We need to respond immediately. That will be part of our moral obligation to be sure that students are able to keep up with learning and be sure that they're learning what is necessary to be successful in the next sequence of courses or in the next grade level. So while these slides probably lend themselves more to the educator that needs to be prepared in this new learning environment, we also know that families, parents and guardians are also eager to understand what does this look like? What does it mean if my child has to be at home today? How might he, she, they be able to log in and be a part of that learning environment? And we're working hard to make sure that we make that possible. And when it's not possible, we will have mechanisms in place for students to be able to log into learning at a later time and still receive the supports necessary to be successful. I heard someone ask or mention earlier in our board meeting that we may need grace. This won't be perfect. We're learning. But as we roll up our sleeves and work together as a team, I think education and learning could be more powerful and more effective than ever as we learn to meet the needs of our students through new lenses and new ways.
That is our presentation on reopening our school buildings at this point. Obviously, it's a lot to take in. It was certainly a fair bit to generate. I go back to the fact that this is really all we've been thinking about for four months. And it's nice to get to this point. It means that we have a heck of a lot more work as we move forward. But I feel confident that we're on the same page with the county, that we're providing services similar to other school districts in our area, that we're following the guidance given to us. Obviously, there's a lot of details to be ironed out, but we feel like we're at a good place right now. Any other comments, questions, concerns, thoughts? Like I said, go ahead, Mr. Spivey.
So Stormdale here. Just some clarifications. I might have missed this, but I just want to kind of go back to it. A question for Kurt. Will the integrated support program run at the BGC? If so, do we have to pay for any modifications of that building or no?
Yeah, good question, Mr. Spivey. We anticipate that we will continue to run our alternatives, our supported online program up at the Boys and Girls Club, as well as our integrated supports program up there. The Boys and Girls Club has just made some changes themselves. They've moved their administrative team out of that facility. And so we are looking at different spaces to be able to use and function. In fact, tomorrow we'll be meeting with the school nurse just to go through a reopening school building risk assessment tool, just to really think through that space. So we are anticipating that. We haven't gotten into any additional costs that might be needed there. The other thing for the board to be aware of, we do run school programs in other facilities. And we are working with those facilities, the juvenile detention facilities. So we've been in contact with them. And then we also support education down at the La Crosse County Jail. So we are, we will have some staff who will be operating in some other facilities. And we're going to do what we can to honor those expectations and protect safety and all those other priorities, so.
Thank you. The July 27 summer schools, will that be the start of the hybrid program? The online format and the in-person format, or is it just going to be online? For Hamilton and Northside Summer School?
Shelley, I don't know if you can speak to that?
I don't know the answer to that one. I think it's, the plans before were that they were all going to be online. And so that is my latest recollection of where things were at with that.
That is correct.
Okay. And then my last thing is, and I guess this probably will be for Lori. Is it possible to have kind of like a standing agenda item where Superintendent Engle can inform us or kind of give us some of the finalized plans around the reopening of schools?
Yes, my understanding is that he is going to be doing that.
Absolutely. Our goal in two weeks, two and a half weeks, three weeks, is to have a very detailed plan that we can add all the things that Mrs. Shrell identified that we're submitting to the county, the same thing with Mrs. Eversen that we're sending to the county. We'll be able to provide those in a timely manner along the way. And so, yes, we will have regular updates, both by email and in person at, well, as we meet for school board meetings.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions unless someone else, another board member does. So my first question, and this might be a question to Mr. White because I believe he was the one who spoke earlier about the need for flexibility among staffing, is if a child comes in contact and they have to be quarantined for 14 days, that's different than if a teacher does. And now we've got a whole classroom that won't have a teacher for 14 days. And now imagine, of course, that's several classrooms. So I'm just curious, I'm not asking for an exact answer to this question at the moment, but is there some information that can be provided to the board about what creative thinking is going into, how we're going to navigate that?
I think, you know, we continue to work through all that. You know, we have normal sub-procedures and how that works. Part of the question, as you expressed, it may have to do with who else was exposed to, could be the whole class is going on during that period of time, in which case we'd be looking toward that blended learning environment that was talked about at that level. So that will have a lot to do with it. But yeah, we continue to work on all those things. As I think maybe Ami had said, who would step up into that position as needed, you know, as we work through? And, you know, it may revolve some creativity with who's working with particular groups, how we're doing it. But we want to try to be as consistent as we possibly can and not introduce lots of new adults into the environment with the students that are there.
And if memory serves, Mr. White, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I know you've talked in the past with the board about some struggles with staffing around subbing. Are there going to be additional efforts made at this point to shore up more subs?
Well, certainly, we continue to recruit, you know, as many subs as we possibly can. One of the things we've tried to do is retain the current subs that we have to the best of our ability. So we've already sent out notices for next year, having them sign up. We're trying to give them all the same regular updates that we're giving our regular staff so that they feel a part of what's going on, so we can retain those that we have. And then, of course, we're already recruiting for next year. We've got our posting out there. We're trying to recruit, especially among those new grads coming right out of college.
Thank you, Mr. White. The second question I have is also with regards to teaching. And Dr. Engel, maybe you can speak to this because I think you said earlier that, and I know Dr. Harsy confirmed that as of Thursday or when this latest bit of information came in that you were waiting for to move forward with this plan, that now there would be a process in place whereby teachers and staff would be much more involved in this process. But I think, Dr. Engel, you mentioned that they had been involved to some extent to this point. Can you shed some light on the role that teachers and staff have played up until now and what's being laid before the board tonight?
Absolutely. There have been teacher focus groups that have provided input to principals in buildings or at grade levels in order to develop the elementary plans and our secondary plans to date. I can let Shelley and Stacy talk about those plans specifically. But there has been teacher involvement throughout getting to this high-level plan. The switch now is really, once we've got this approval, you know, this consent from the board to move forward, now we really get to dive into the weeds and the details and involve teachers in a much more substantial way. We needed their initial input to get to this point. But really now it switches to the teaching and learning aspects of it as opposed to like the logistics of what we're going to do. I can let Mrs. Eversen go first and just talk about how that's worked at the secondary level.
Sure. Yes, thank you. So that is exactly true what Dr. Engel has shared. And if I might add, I don't know if I explained this very well before. I think part of the concern that I was discovering today is, I think teachers and some stakeholders had heard that we had a plan that was going to be shared with the board tonight and wondered what plan because we don't have specific details ironed out yet. So I fielded a few phone calls and emails today whereby I was explaining that no, tonight's presentation is a draft, an outline. And this is the same outline that our principals have used when facilitating their individual focus groups. So I think if there's some confusion, some fear out there with teachers, it is just that. We don't have our teachers in one captain.
Stacy, I don't know if you hear this, but you dropped off for a moment there.
Oh, so sorry. I don't know what you missed. I'm sure. But I guess what I'm explaining is, you are correct, Dr. Engel, when you explained that thus far, teachers and principals have relied on this outline to provide a general facilitation of a plan and what to plan around. But now becomes, our time is short to fill in the details, to come up with our specific master schedules, cohorts, the design around teaching and learning. So teachers will continue to be a valued voice behind that planning. I also know that some questionnaires were sent by our principals to teachers soliciting some feedback. And I just want to say out loud for all to hear that no idea is a bad idea at this point. We are still all ears and listening to the different ways that we can do school this fall and into the future.
And then Mrs. Shrell, I can have you add just what has been done at the elementary as well.
Yeah, so starting at the 4K level, we've been meeting regularly with 4K teachers, talking about what it's going to look like in their classroom, collaborating too with our Model 3 sites, Head Start and childcare centers so that we can have alignment. So 4K teachers have been listening closely to what it looks like in our childcare centers and all of that so that we've been making those recommendations as well to the county. So there's been a lot of work on that. Various principals have been sharing kind of the grid system that we created with their staff. I would say there's some select schools that may not have had just as much sharing. We have had three of our schools that are in transition to new principals. With them just now, a couple of them just ending their previous job and starting with us. So they are busy. We're working to get those buildings up to speed. But there's been a lot of either staff meeting type sharing of that grid system or small group work, just beginning to prep teachers for what that would look like. There are some focus groups that are getting ready to start. There have been, a number of staff have been working with Dr. Lahacke on identifying a learning management system and providing feedback. And so as that decision gets solidified, then the next step is some focus groups that elementary principals are going to be facilitating with teachers from all of the different grade levels. Again, helping to identify what worked well this last spring, what didn't go well, and how do we craft that model of what things should look like instructionally with technology integration in the fall. So that is taking place. A couple of our specialty groups, not all of them, but a few of our specialty groups such as librarians have gotten together and have kind of crafted some plans and begun to submit those. Our, some of our specialists, I know Lisa Schreiner is our supervisor of fine arts, visual fine arts. And she has been having conversations with art teachers. I believe she's been in conversation with other supervisors. I believe she's been in conversation with other supervisors so that they can start to align their work with what we've been doing at the elementary. So that's a number, like of the things that we've been doing, as I said, the nitty gritty. As the county document gets fully approved, the, the amount of work that's gonna be or the, the challenging work for our teachers is about to start. When you sit there and say, you know, you can't have only three kids at a time out by their lockers. Well, what's that gonna look like in an elementary classroom? How do you do that? Or how are we gonna get lunches, once we hear more, and breakfast and eat those in the room? And how are we gonna craft duty schedules and all of that? And a lot of that, so we're coming up with and getting approval at the county level for the broad picture. But every building looks different. Their square footage in classroom is different. The number of entrances that they have, where their bathrooms are located. All of that is gonna take a significant amount of teacher conversation and brainstorming at every individual building. So while we've been working to involve them right now, whenever we can, moving forward, I would say at probably a pretty rapid pace, there's gonna be a lot of groups in, in the buildings trying to take this and now make it workable in their building and in their settings and collaborating with their teams about instruction at the grade level and essential standards and, and all of that. So a lot has taken place so far, but even more to come.
And I would say that in it, we were initially anticipating trying to open our year-round schools in early July. And so the priority of effort in June for all of us was elementary, you know. So we might be a little bit further ahead there because we had to think more intensely and, and we needed all of our brain power to try and get there. And I think that may account for some of the differentials between the, the secondary and the elementary level too, so.
Well, and one of the things too at the elementary, we, we know that the success of our building is gonna rest on how strong our routines and procedures are for our littlest learners. And so if we don't have those incredibly solid, and teachers then know what that's gonna look like in their classroom and how all that's gonna function. You know, we want a smooth and effective start to the school year. So lots of work on just the, the nitty gritty of like recess, you know. Can you play on the playground equipment? When, at what color do we get to use playground balls or hula hoops? Or those are all, you know, like as Ms. Como mentioned, birthday treats are huge at an elementary level. So we have to talk through, how, how do birthday treats continue so that we can also honor a lot of those traditions that we have?
Yeah, I have a question as well. Yeah, so my question is, yes, a lot of teachers and TAs, you know, are the other lifeblood, you know, of our schools, right? And so let's say, for example, a teacher does come in contact with COVID-19 and they do test positive, right? And they would assume to probably take two or three weeks of quarantine. Will that quarantine be paid sick leave? And if we're unsure of it, or if not, then how can we make it a paid sick leave?
So the, if, it's all right. Sure. So there are federal programs, as you know, when the federal government came out in March and all of this started. There is a COVID leave that's available if you contract the disease or are ordered to quarantine. There are 10 days, 10 workdays that are paid for. Does not count against the employee's sick leave or anything like that, provided through funding through the government. That, and that program runs through the end of December for sure. And they're looking at the possibility of that being extended. So there is some, some possibility there for employees who would happen to contract, whether that happened at work or it happened in another environment or happened anywhere, it doesn't matter. The people, we have had some employees who have had to use that already. It also involves with childcare situations too, where there's some possibilities there for people.
So it's 10 days, you said, right?
It begins with a, a basic 10 days that are allowed.
Okay. Yeah, because I think there was a study done where it was like 30% of our teachers are, I think, above 50 years old. And so that would put our teachers at that kind of like higher risk mark. And so in some case where some teachers might have to take like, because of their age and maybe like pre-existing condition, it might take like maybe 30 days, right? And so what happens if it kind of stretches out, like does the federal monies goes to that too, or how does that work out?
So the federal, again, provides for 10 days, but then after that, a person can avail themselves, if they need to be out longer for recovery or those kind of things, they can avail themselves of their own sick leave during that time also.
Okay, okay.
I would say we're also exploring legal counsel and, and, you know, various rules. But, you know, maybe they had to quarantine, but they're not ill. They might still be able to provide teaching services from home. That might change the nature of the leaves. If they need to take a leave, they might be teaching from home. And we're supervising that class with an instructional coach or another teacher, you know. So they may still be able to do their job and be paid. We need to make sure that we follow the legality of that, make sure there's not discrimination issues. But, you know, I think we're approaching this with all the creativity possible to ensure that kids get the best possible instruction and we don't harm teachers' livelihood in the process.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank you.
Oh, Brenda, first, thank you, everyone, for all the time and energy you put into this. It is absolutely, you've thought about a lot of things. My first question is, is there any indication from the county of how high the active cases might be in the area that they would just recommend that we go virtually completely and not ever go in person?
We worked carefully with the county to develop what red means on that compass for schools. They haven't yet indicated a desire for an order as it relates to closing schools at the local level. I have the, I have the, the ability to close schools if it gets to a certain point, you know, and that would be done, you know, with the school board's guidance and in collaboration with the county. It'd be like a snow day, you know, if it's a safety issue, then we're allowed to, to close school. We, we haven't talked about specific numbers at this point, but as things change and as things rise, you know, that'll be a close conversation with, with the county. And if we're shutting down other similar services, we would have to consider shutting down schools as well. Like Mrs. Shrell indicated earlier, we think of our elementary services in particular as essential services. And so we would kind of look at guidance for childcare centers, for health workers as well as, as, as models for that. But we don't have a specific number at this point, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Also, my question with, with the social distancing in the elementary, are you already planning that, that when you take that into account, that some students will be doing the virtual academy? I just think of some of the, some of the schools are fairly crowded and didn't know if that was already taken into account. And then also, will there not be any specials with the FIAID? Since it sounded like that might be where you are planning to do, to, to house some of, of the curriculum outside of physical education as well?
We intend to keep all of our specials. It'll just operate in different ways. You know, we, we're, you know, like music, we're not supposed to sing out loud in a classroom because it contributes to the spread of COVID-19. So how do we allow kids to still learn about music? Maybe we have more hand tapping or physical instruments or humming, exploring all of our options. And our teachers will provide the best advice there, you know. Well, that's a clear case where our teachers would need to weigh in. We don't have those answers for them. They'll come up with incredible options that will allow them to meet their standards and, and remain safe. And then, I forget, what was the other, the first part of your question?
I just wondered if, because I know some of our elementary schools are more crowded and, or at more. I'm wondering if you're already taking into account the social distancing and having enough space that you're, you're hoping that students are going to sign up virtual and that they won't, for the virtual academy and won't be on site.
We're making our plans around the, the least restrictive conditions, so to speak. So right now, we're planning as though every student's coming back. That will only, so if 20% of our students or 10% or 5% of our students are online, that will only make our, our job easier as we move forward. That was part of our reason for kind of keeping our consistency across red, orange, and yellow as well, to a large extent. You know, if we plan for the most restrictive situation with, you know, the most students present, then, then we'll be prepared for anything. And that, and that enrollment will know by the end of July. So that'll allow us to create much more detailed plans as we move forward. You know, if we've got 20% of a building that has chosen the online option, that'll give us a lot more flexibility. But for right now, we're assuming that every student chooses to come face to face.
I'll just add a little bit more detail to, with regard to specials. The current plan under orange and red are that specials would, our specialists would push into the classroom. We kind of jokingly refer to that as scrub in and scrub out. So they're coming into the room and they're, you know, practicing, you know, good hand washing and sanitizing. And they've got masks on and they'll be doing social distancing. But going into the room, that allows, one, students, we're trying to limit the number of students traveling throughout the building. So there really is, under orange and red, for the most part, kids are coming into the school at the elementary level and they're going into their classroom. And whenever we can, people are coming to them. And then we're limiting the numbers that are coming in, but they have to do the scrubbing in and scrubbing out with that. If they were moving and, you know, when students transfer to specials, you could have 75 kids in the hallway going to art, music, and PE. So we want to stay away from that as well as if every 45 minutes, you've got a new group of students going into the art room, then you've got a clean in between that. Whereas if it's a specialist that goes into the classroom, the students stay in that room and they're the only one that is entering in there. So that is what our, our current plan is. Of course, music and PE. We encourage, if the weather is nice, they can go outside for those. And then with, we have even in our guidelines, they can sing outside, provided they have nine feet of social distancing, which is what the guidelines are for singing. So we've been trying to think about all of those details.
Thank you.
I have a quick call up for Mr. White based on Mr. Lee's question. Mr. White, is there a limit to those, how many times teachers may use, have those, access to those 10 days? Because obviously you could be exposed multiple times. Are there limits on that?
The federal government provided the 10 days. That's the limit that the government.
Oh, just like one, a one-time 10-day?
Correct. That's what the federal government has provided. Obviously, our staff had the ability, depending how long they've been here, to have built up as many as 136 days, depending on their longevity and how long that they've been and how they've used their days. So there will be plenty of access, you know, beyond that for an individual too.
Thank you.
And as a suggestion, I don't know if it's something you might think about implementing. At Gunderson, they actually have a PTO bank where employees can donate their PTO for, for other people throughout the facility to be able to kind of like apply for. So if I had 136 hours, I might say, you know what? I'm gonna give 30 hours to the PTO bank because I accumulated so quickly. So that if somebody who did have COVID, they would be able to request to be able to use those hours. Just a thought.
And we do have some hardship pool, pools within our employee groups. So that if someone does get into that kind of situation, they can access some of those personal days that people have, have gone unused or have donated.
Very cool. Thank you.
We, I mean, to be honest, we know that we're gonna come across some incredibly difficult and probably tragic situations. And we're trying to understand what our limits are with regards to federal and state laws. You know, at the same time, you know, we're also under budget constraints. And, you know, it would be incredible if the federal government would, you know, create some more flexibility for school districts or the state would through various leaves and opportunities. And, you know, we have those choices locally too. But, you know, we're prepared for a myriad of, of HR situations. And it can be tough. And we may come to you from time to time, you know, to talk about our options as we move forward, depending on how things play out, so.
There, there may be additional questions that school board members have, and by all means, we want to attend to those. But, Dr. Ingle, can you provide us with some insight on what you're looking for, looking to the board for tonight?
Um, I think, so we're looking for general approval that we can move forward and share this plan with the community and the staff. I, as far as I can tell, have not heard any significant objections to any particular element of the plan as it stands so far. A lot of questions for more details, which we will certainly be providing. But unless there's objection, we would take that next step and, and share this more broadly, so. I don't know that action that needs to be taken. We just, this was an informational discussion session where we would, you know, take feedback and make adjustments as necessary.
I'd appreciate hearing from other board members on what your thoughts are on that.
I think there's been a lot of hard work done by our administrative team. And I'm very appreciative of the depth of thought that has gone into this. And I'm sure in the, in trying to think of every solution, there will be some that are missed. So it's just the way of the world right now. So thank you for what you've done. I don't have any concerns with sharing it. I think getting that feedback from other stakeholders would be very beneficial.
I think it's hard to do a presentation and show every single option of every single problem that may occur. You did a very good job of giving us the broad overview. Any question we asked, you were, you had an answer for. You were definitely on the ball as far as knowing the different steps through the elementary all the way up through the high school, what to do virtually, how buses are. I mean, you did a very comprehensive plan and presentation. So thank you.
I think there'll still be a lot of details, of course, that'll have to be worked out. But I think we're off to, got a good groundwork to, to work on. And I also want to point out the cooperation among area schools in the county, I think, is key. So we are kind of working with other groups, so we aren't, students aren't going from one school to another because one school has this, this option and this district doesn't. So I appreciate the, the cooperation and I look forward to hearing how, or watching how the academy works. Because I think there, there are some good things there that might, you know, look, that will want to do things differently in the future. So thanks for that thoughtfulness. And I think we're off to a start and we'll just have to be working to, to, you know, finalize more details as we get along.
I can also say that I've heard about it from the other side, from CISA four, how all of the superintendents are getting together virtually and discussing their plans and bouncing up off of each other. So it's really nice. It's not just the, the small, or the four districts that are working together for the virtual. It's everyone within the CISA. So that's really nice that you take the time to have those meetings.
Are there other board members that want to provide any input? Okay. Well, there seems to be a consensus for moving forward with where we, well, where we are at this point. As a, as a teacher that has to go back to teaching pretty soon, I'm sure that, like all of you, I have a number of concerns. And so we'll continue to work together on it. Dr. Ingle, do you have anything else before we move to the next agenda item?
I do not. Thank you for all of your feedback. Regular updates will follow. And, you know, be, just be prepared to be flexible and, and, you know, show some grace.
Thanks to all of you again for being part of the presentation tonight and for availing yourself of questions from the board. I'm sure there'll be many other questions to come as, as well. So, thank you. All right, board members, we have just one more item on the agenda for tonight. So that's 2.04. It's one of our bylaws and it's on speaker limitations. And I assume this will probably be a fairly brief discussion unless it needs to be longer. So two things have happened in the recent week that has kind of compelled me to bring forward this bylaw with some suggested language change. As you will recall, at our last board meeting, we had a public speaker who was a little reticent to share their street address. And then shortly thereafter, the next day, I think even, or if not the same night, I had someone who reached out to email who works with some students in the area and had questions about them coming forward, having to share their street address. So I went and pulled the bylaw and Laura and I had a little discussion about it. It's one that, as you can see, had not been updated in quite some time. I can't speak to what some of I can't speak to what the board intended with that original language. But I am suggesting a couple of changes. One, that we remove that language of of citizen. Because I don't think that that's required to have a public speaker come and speak before the board citizenship. But the other piece is a removal of the street address. Now, there's no legal reason that a public speaker has to provide their street address. I do think it's informative for the board to know, however, if a public speaker, the the city or town or village they live in. I do think that is very helpful for the board to know. But I am suggesting in order to remove any potential barriers for public speakers, that we remove the requirement for the the street address. And and this is especially in light of, you know, in in the spirit of the meeting this evening about reopening schools to a number of things we have on our agenda coming up. Assume there'll be a lot of public input on a number of issues. And so I'm bringing this forward tonight with the hopes that we can move this through and get it in place before we have too many other public speakers come come before us. So I'm bringing it forward as an information item to see if the board has any questions or concerns about those suggested changes.
This is Juan. I do. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is running. I was just going to say, I think they're great suggestions. So thank you for bringing that.
Thank you, Ms. Langley.
I do have a concern about not having the street address registered, at least with the school district office. Not sharing it at a board meeting, I completely understand. And I would be fine with making the suggested change for the person when they're presenting in front of the board, where they could just say their name and their city or town of residence. But I think it's important for us to have the residential address on file in the district office in case we need to communicate with them in a way other than via phone call or via email. There may be a need for us to mail something out and it's good to have their address.
Laura, can you speak to that for a moment? Is there information that you require when people register with you that we need to know about? I think we're having some technical difficulties. Okay, so in the meantime, Laura, are you are you there?
Says her mic is not available.
Okay. Okay, let's hold tight for just a minute. Mr. Jimenez, can I ask a follow up question of you?
Always.
Okay, so is this something? So I can imagine, for example, that someone, a public speaker, calls Ms. Tiger Wall to register to speak and they don't. I mean, even if you even as you suggest, if there were a compelling reason to mail them something, they don't want to provide that information. Are you suggesting that we still require that? Or that's just an option we provide them if if they wanted to leave that information?
I think that it should still be required. Again, I can understand the hesitancy to speak it in front of God and everybody in a public meeting. Totally understand that because I felt the same way when I've spoken in front of the board in other places. But I still think it should be a requirement to record the public speaker's address if they're going to be addressing the board in any way.
Could we maybe record it but not publish it with the meeting minutes? Because that was the other thing. The agenda had the actual address out there and he didn't that that was something he didn't like also. So just kind of keep it in house? Is that what you're hoping, Juan? Or are you saying that it has to be something that has to be displayed somewhere?
I'm not suggesting displaying it at all. So not not having to speak and not having to be on the agenda. But I think having having it recorded in the district office would be important. That would be my my suggestion.
My guess is you're going to be you're going to have open meeting laws and and things and you won't be able to do that. But maybe Laura can speak to that. Whether if you have somebody's name on file, I don't think you could. I'm I'm not sure if if you give it, if it would have to be out there.
Because don't you kind of have your meeting minutes, Laura? And then the published meeting minutes type of thing?
Yeah, so can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I I'm kind of rejoining here. So for the moment, my take on it is that I well, I've kind of followed my predecessors' protocol for meeting public speakers at this point. And so I published the public speakers, their meeting name, address and their reason to speak. And that goes into the permanent record. Now, after recent research, I've come to find that it's not obligated to publish actually anything, that the board chooses what they want to elicit from a public speaker. And so there aren't steadfast requirements of what a public speaker needs to provide to be a public speaker. So from that regard, I guess I've kind of gone off of what we've done in the past.
I I think to Brad's point, though, Brad, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if we ask for that information, it 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 is definitely subject to open records requests.
What I'm thinking here.
So I hear Mr. I hear your concern, Mr. Jimenez. Since it's not legally required for us to ask, I would just want to hear more compelling evidence in addition to that from the board as to why, especially because it it still would be subject to open records.
Well, the reason I always thought it was in there is so you can identify if the person is actually in the school district or isn't. And I think that's the more important question. Or is a person coming forward who is in our district? Or is the person not in our district? And I think that information is is probably what we're looking for. And you could probably get that without asking a specific address.
I would agree with that. I mean, we can figure out just by their zip code, honestly, if they're a constituent or not.
Other board members, do you have compelling reasons why we should? I mean, I agree with Mr. Jimenez about not asking for it before someone speaks. But I mean, do you have compelling reasons to ask for it, period?
I would. Maybe not the address. I think if they register to speak with Laura, they should leave some sort of contact information so that we can get back to them in any way if need be, just as kind of some, I don't know, follow up or anything like that. I think the address, I'm kind of on the side. I go either way. I'm really not a fan of publishing addresses. So definitely don't want to do that in terms of registering the address. If that's if we can find out if they live in the district in other ways, I'd rather use that.
Yeah, so I'm definitely suggesting that we we do continue. We at least ask what town, village or city that they live in. I think that take care of your concern, Mr. Mr. Spivey.
I don't think that takes care of our concern as if they are in our district. Because there are certain people who the maps are all weird and and you could have a West Salem address probably and still go to the school district of La Crosse. So, I mean, that just knowing their town and village, I don't think is going to give us that information as to whether they are in our district.
Would the zip code work?
Zip code is just, I mean, that's, I mean, that doesn't do that's even less information than than the town, village or or city.
So to your to your point, Mr. Corburg, I thought about. So I thought about this in the language with the policy, right? Because I also assumed that the intent was to figure out, is this a constituent of ours or is it not? Is this someone in our district or is it not? I stopped short of that because I I worried about that sending the message if we ask for that, that the public speaker would be taken less seriously or whatnot if if we ask that question. I'm sharing that to say, I hear your concern. I thought of it as well and I can be convinced otherwise. But that was just my why I didn't do that.
It it may be that, like, I know one of my friends had some lived in Madison years ago. And there was a lot of controversy going on. And they if you had controversy, you could theoretically have people coming from outside of your district and taking over your whole meeting and it not being about the people who are within your district. And I think that's probably where they they wanted to keep it if, you know, just to know where you're at. So that way you couldn't say, oh, I'm from LA. That doesn't, you know, you're you're visiting. What is your discussion about that type of thing?
I would say to that point, at this point, there's I don't see anything in our board policy which prevents which allows you to disallow somebody who lives in Sparta but would allow somebody who lives in La Crosse. That isn't a provision in the board policy at this point. So it's really a matter of understanding who is before you with a little more clarity. And I think that is weighed against the stifling of public debate and democracy. You know, so there's the compelling interest to know if who in front of you has like an actual concern you care about versus are you limiting individuals' ability to speak freely on a topic of interest to them? And so I think that's the tension here. And the board just kind of has to figure out where they sit in terms of knowing who's who's who you're directly responsible to and potentially limiting somebody's ability to speak freely on a topic of interest.
And honestly, we limit them to five minutes anyway, so, you know.
Well, I don't I don't think we'd be limiting them if they weren't in our district. But I would like to know if person is in our district. I guess that's the question. You know, I I'm not up for saying, just because you're not from our district, we're not going to listen to you or we're not going to let you talk. But I I think to Don's point, if 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 there gets to be a controversial topic, it would be nice to know, you know, if we're hearing from district people in our within our district or people who are are being asked to come and talk just because it's a topic that they're something familiar with or compassionate about. So.
Mr. Corburg, are would your suggestion then be as opposed to asking for city, town or village that we ask people to identify whether or not they are within the La Crosse School District boundaries?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay, are there any what what are other? And I'm looking at the time because we've got four minutes until nine and we cannot continue further without a vote. And it's been a long night and I want to respect that. But are there any compelling reasons to do away with that language that you see there and replace that with asking about whether or not they live within the district boundaries?
I think we should do that. Do I make a motion for that?
It's a thanks for the question, but just an information item tonight. But I'd like to bring this forward at our next board meeting for a first reading. And so much like we've done with recent policy changes, I can make I can make that change that Mr. Corburg is suggesting and bring that forward for a reading, unless, again, board members have a compelling reason to not do that.
I like the idea of knowing if they're in our district.
And I may be out on a limb here, but I still have a concern with removing the residential address without it. I mean, again, not needing to state it in front of a public meeting, but at least registering it with the school district. And with the open records request, that's still a hurdle that they have to climb in order to get that information. And it has to be weighed against certain factors in the law. So I still would stand by keeping the residential address being registered with the school district office.
Okay. Any any other thoughts from other board members?
I just want to I'm not a board member, but I just want to piggyback on Juan's comment there, though, that even if they register, it still gets published to the board agenda. And so that is online, so that is available to the masses.
Right. And again, I would not add it to the board agenda either, having it registered in the office and that's it.
Okay, so you're saying just keep a, for lack of a better term, a spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so what I will suggest, since we have a minute left, is I can make that change that Mr. Corburg suggested and bring that forward for a first reading, which if we have a motion and a second for, we can have further discussion around this. That gives board members some time to think on it between now and then. I want to think on it a little bit and I'm still a little bit concerned about that wording, but this will give us a little bit of time to think about.
I appreciate that.
Is there any and we can bring back that discussion as well, Mr. Jimenez, about just keeping the spreadsheet? Any other questions or concerns about doing that?
I guess the only thing I would say is if we do collect that information, we need to find out if it's public record and if it has to be. I mean, people could still get it in a roundabout way if that's if that's what you're talking about. And I it's a question I can't answer. It might be a question for like an attorney to answer.
Laura and I will have that answer for you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so I'll will when we do agenda planning tomorrow afternoon, Ms. Tiger Wild and Dr. Engel and I will add that to the agenda for next week. Thanks again, everyone, and we'll adjourn. Talk with you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.